It is five o'clock on August eleventh and I call this special called meeting to order unless there's an objection seeing none. This meeting is called to order.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for purposes of legal discussion.
Second, um any discussion seeing none? I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back.
Thank you.
Are you okay? Are you set?
John, do you need?
He works on Nactia, doesn't need photos at all. So he has his hands in photos. Maybe I'll make a deal.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
No, I'm just trying.
I don't think so.
Excuse me, sorry. Yeah.
Hey, Lippy.
Are you okay? Are you set? John, do you need?
Good evening.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn the special called meeting.
Move to adjourn the special called meeting. Second.
Move by Councilman Harris, second by Councilman Price. Any further discussion on the adjournment? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. All right, now. I call the regularly scheduled August 11th Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing none, this meeting is called to order. We're going to have a pitch hitter. Councilman Henigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, I'm going to take a moment of privilege and ask for a moment of silence in memory of Officer David Rose from DeKalb County, who ran in when others would not and likely prevented a much worse outcome than what happened at the end of last week. So if you'll join me, please, in a moment of remembering Officer David Rose. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Yes, we did lose a true hero last week. Just so you know, we are doing everything we can to assist the DeKalb County Police Department, starting with our peer support. Our K-9 Public Safety Assistance Cana has been attending their roll calls. All right, at this time, I'd like to call up, I'm here to discuss the officer of the quarter and the employee of the quarter. I would like to first ask K-9 Officer Elvin Arias and K-9 Ranger to come to the podium. Okay, during the second quarter of 2025, Officer Arias demonstrated outstanding initiative, skill, and dedication during multiple high-profile incidents. He assisted John's Creek PD in locating a missing elderly woman from an assisted living facility. Despite limited information and no clear direction of travel, Officer Arias and K-9 Ranger successfully picked up a scent over an hour after the female had gone missing. Their efforts led to the safe recovery of the elderly female who was found in a nearby wooded area. During another incident, Officer Arias pursued a vehicle involved in an aggravated assault in DeKalb County, which had previously fled from two other jurisdictions. During the pursuit, Officer Arias maintained consistent communication with road supervisors, providing real-time updates on location, speed, and road conditions. The suspect's vehicle crashed into multiple vehicles before the pursuit ended. All three occupants were taken into custody or facing charges in various jurisdictions, including Brookhaven, Sandy Springs, and DeKalb County. In the stolen vehicle case, Officer Arias and K-9 Ranger identified a suspect by tracking a piece of evidence, a shoulder bag. And finally, Officer Arias swiftly spotted and apprehended a robbery suspect who was walking away from Cold Stone Creamery with the business's cash register. Officer Arias' ability to respond decisively in high-pressure situations along with his teamwork and professionalism makes him a standout member of the department. So for our officer of the second quarter, he does an outstanding job every day, including his partner. I actually was in the office when I saw that pursuit go by, and it was probably one of the best pursuits I've ever heard on the radio to apprehend those dangerous suspects. I was able to witness that firsthand. He's done a great job. So this is our officer of the quarter for second quarter 2025. So the Dunwoody Police Foundation, who is one of our biggest supporters, not only gives a gift certificate to our employee and officer of the quarter, but she wanted to make sure that K-9 Ranger also received an award.
Oh, you're going to care it yourself? Ah, yay Ranger! He's trying to use his nose to figure out what it is.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call up Public Safety Ambassador Paul Chastain to the podium. So Paul is a very familiar face. When we finally got the go-ahead to do the ambassador program, he was the first one to step in, one of the first ones to step in. He is a citizen here in Dunwoody, and he was also one of our biggest volunteers. So we're really happy to have him on board, and he does an outstanding job every day. During the second quarter of 2025, Public Safety Ambassador Paul Chastain has been recognized throughout our department for his consistent friendly demeanor and positive attitude, bringing a strong sense of professionalism and inspiration towards everyday tasks. Whether he's greeting a coworker or assisting in community, he always, he's always friendly, upbeat, bringing a great attitude with him to each workday. PSA Chastain is also a great team player. He's willing to go above and beyond to support his coworker and is always ready to assist regardless of the task at hand. He goes out of his way to volunteer and support others, ensuring that if someone needs an extra hand, he is there without hesitation. PSA Chastain's consistent kindness, reliability, and willingness to help make him a valuable part of this department. Our employee of the quarter for second quarter 2025 is Public Safety Ambassador Paul Chastain. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me do this. The men and women that work in this department work hard every day, and recognition for them is very important. I try to talk fast because I know we've got one long agenda today.
I want to take a moment to congratulate our officer of the quarter and our employee of the quarter for the Dunwoody Police Department. We have an outstanding police department, and they do yeoman's work for us every moment of every day, and we are incredibly grateful. And I have offered And I have offered to dog sit Ranger, and they won't let me for some reason. But we appreciate the police foundation's ongoing support for everything our department does, and they are the reason we actually have our dogs who can find people and things. So we are very grateful to the work that the police foundation does. If you are interested in supporting the police foundation, you can Google the Dunwoody Police Foundation. Thank you. All right, public comments, I have a big stack of cards. There's 30 minutes. Each speaker has up to three minutes. Two things, you don't have to take the whole three minutes. And if someone has said what you've already want to say, and you want to stand up and say, wave your hand, I agree, you're welcome to do that. You don't have to take your turn. I'm gonna start with Elizabeth Kramer. If you'll approach, and I'm gonna go ahead and call on, sorry, my cards are turned the wrong way, Eric Stafford to be ready. Go ahead, Elizabeth, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me this public input. It's much appreciated. I am a resident at 1202 Windy Branch Circle. I'm an executive, mom of one, wife, homeowner, and happen to share my dwelling with my 84-year-old mother. I have firsthand, I'm talking on the topic of the Dominion development. I have firsthand knowledge of aging seniors in our community. My mother lives independently, is one of the ideal candidates for this property from both the target resident and location. But my experience over the past 15 years is what frames my concerns, which spans not just safety, but also services needed for a community that is aging in place and the economics as a rental option. What Dominion is proposing is not senior living, but they've said that. It's simply age-restricted housing with income-related rents. There are no services provided, no transportation, no medical coordination, no onsite staffing, no staffing to support community engagement, critical for aging seniors and for even 55 and up. As someone actively balancing family and elder care, I can tell you, a senior apartment alone is not enough. Regardless of age, services and community engagement should be central to the value any property should provide. But that is not part of the package we are getting. This development has very limited green space, limited access to resident and visitor parking, and limited amenities overall. From a safety standpoint, this plan is alarming. The site proposes limited entrance and exit, housing over 250 units, many of whom could have mobility or other challenges. Just a month ago, a fire at a senior facility in Fall River, Massachusetts became a tragedy. I understand that was an assisted living facility. But my concern with the Dominion project is the egresses. The one to two driveways in and out with almost no access in the back of the building. Couple that with the challenging for residents egress down flights of stairs, some of whom that might not even be an option, is a recipe for disaster. Remember, the Dominion project will not have 24-hour staffing. All these risks become the burden of the city. The economics, for the renter, that is, Dominion is proposing a little over $1,200 for a one-bedroom and up to 17, a little over that for a three-bedroom. Albeit less than current rates at Dunwoody overall, the overall average savings is about 22% or $333.38 a month. For knowing what someone just living.
Thank you.
All right.
Next is Eric Stafford. And Mr. Stafford, I have two cards.
Second part as well?
Okay, that's fine.
My name is Eric Stafford. I've lived in my property for over 20 years before it even became Dunwoody. And that is in terraces of Dunwoody. And what I'm talking about today and what I want to, you all think about is, we've had three different requests in the last five years for some giving people or companies some kind of variances, including a dog run for a company which makes dogs bark in our property. We also had a bird king where they cut down a third of the trees that separated our property from that bird king. And now they're asking for a driveway for a oil change facility that's gonna butt against our property. So what I would say is, at some point, each property has to have, not be the only part of this look bad. Do we need to grow Dunwoody? Yes, we do. Do we need to do it at the expense of the people, 134 units plus that live at Dunwoody? No, we don't. We can do better, but we have to ask ourselves, is it okay to always ask the same community to do it over and over? I don't want a dog park next to me or a dog run for a shelter that they have there. I don't want the bird king with less trees, and now they put in two drives. So I hear the orders all night long, and I don't want to hear the pneumatic noises from the oil change place right up against within 500 feet of the pool that I pay for every month. So I'd appreciate if we would think about this when we put these in the agenda and we look at these things. Because I've been here before, Dunwoody was Dunwoody. I don't ask for a lot, but we need to do better for the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Sunear? If you'll just correct my pronunciation.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. I want to talk about the Dominion rezoning as well. You'll hear many comments about reasons why we shouldn't do it. I want to highlight one thing, which is traffic. That area of Dunwoody and anybody who drives that frequently knows Mount Vernon Road through Dunwoody Village, as well as Ashford-Dunwoody intersection, as well as the branches, is a very congested, particularly at rush hour. And in fact, the Georgia Department of Transportation discusses it at capacity. So I would ask you that, one, we should not do a rezoning without a significant traffic study. To my knowledge, Dominion has not done any traffic study. In fact, I asked them that at the recent Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Their response was, one, they did not. Secondly, they said, well, it'd be less traffic. And so I asked them, what do you mean less traffic? Well, less traffic than if you built a large commercial shopping center or some other facility, which was not an answer. So I would ask you to reject the zoning application without a significant traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline? Kinsler, maybe? Sorry. You approach the microphone, and you'll have up to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Caroline Kinsler. Not, are we supposed to say our address?
No, you don't have to.
Um, so I'll try to keep my comments short. I know a lot of speakers are here tonight. I spoke at the Planning Commission meeting on July 8th in support of the Dominion rezoning. I'm here to reiterate those comments once again. I shared several data points from the American Community Survey at the interest of not boring the whole audience and won't repeat those here. I did email those to all of mayor and council. They're available in the recording. I'm happy to email them to anyone. The American Community Survey is a government survey product, so that is government data. And my purpose in that was to highlight the cost burden for most seniors and renters in the community of Dunwoody. And so I wanted to show up in person, reiterate my support for the project. Thank you for your turn.
Thank you. Bill Grossman? Approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
I'd like to comment. I'm Bill Grossman, 5061 Hidden Branches Drive, Dunwoody. Comment on three first-read rezonings that you'll hear tonight. Dominion's proposal to construct an age-restricted, income-restricted, multi-unit senior housing community would be a first for the city. We allowed an income-restricted apartment complex on Ashwood Parkway off Ashford-Dunwoody to be built a couple of decades ago, when that property owner applied eight years later to change the site-specific zoning tied to restricted income financing so that they could sell the units with no encumbrances. We learned that due to a lack of any oversight, no unit was ever rented at less than full market rate, even though their zoning approval conditions and financing was tied to the lower income requirements. The rezoning was allowed, and the property was flipped. The moral learned is that the community development department has no staff, policy, or procedures in place to oversee these types of zoning conditions that history has taught us require monitoring. The Dominion Development is not a neighborhood-serving use. It's a multifamily use that the applicant has admitted withdrawal from several zip codes outside Dunwoody. So this is not a valid neighborhood transition opportunity either. The comprehensive plan that you just submitted to the state shows details for the Ashford character area. Four stories is allowed in the Ashford character area, up to five for commercial use. The applicant wants six stories over an inadequate parking garage for a non-commercial use. A rumor has it this is tied to a planned downgrade by city staff of current requirements for non-combustible materials for taller buildings, so it can be built cheaper. It's only been a few years since the timber lobby forced Dunwoody to remove its requirement exceeding state standards and requiring concrete rather than stick wooden buildings for taller buildings. I was disappointed that in April, this Dominion application was blessed by the Development Review Committee, which consists of top-appointed bureaucrats on the Dunwoody payroll who do not live here. I would have preferred that it, they waited until after it went to a public meeting, like the Planning Commission first. I was surprised to see, when I was reviewing the comp plan that you submitted to the state a week ago, that multifamily is not shown as a permitted use in the Ashford District. Multifamily was discussed in the Ashford District as possible in other locations, something stuck in it next week.
Thank you. Sue Ellis? Approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Mayor and council, thank you. My name is Sue Ellis, and I've lived here for 38 years.
A little louder, please.
Those of us who oppose Dominion's rezoning application are not opposed to senior living in Dunwoody. The reason for our opposition is the density of Dominion's plan. It belongs in another area. Any new housing contemplated in the Ashford character area should be townhomes, cottages, or condominiums. The Life South property is a transition area and should be much less dense than Dominion proposes. Density like this should be built in the perimeter, near transit, or along Peachtree Industrial. What we need on this property is the missing metal type of construction, like condos, cottages, and townhouses, bringing less density as we transition from the perimeter area with higher density into the residential character area of our city with the least density. We urge you to deny Dominion's rezoning.
Ali? I know, I saw him today.
Hello, city council. I'm gonna be quick because it seems like everyone doesn't like Dominion. This would be the time to applause. But anyways, so I just want to talk real quickly about item number 11, rebidding major municipal services contracts. If you look into that, into the master agenda. If I've read it correctly, it seems like we're looking at potentially bringing in-house several of the outside vendor contracts we've had for years and years and years, which makes sense. When the city started, we couldn't facilitate, couldn't kind of deal with a lot of different things. So we had to outsource them to different places. But now that we've grown, now that we've done a really good job, I think we should really strongly consider bringing them in-house. We treat our employees well. We have good benefits. We can train them. It seems like Dunwoody, actual Dunwoody city employees are very caring. They care about the city. They care about the citizens. So I would say, when you come to discuss item number 11 today, you take that into consideration, maybe see a little bit, potentially bring in more of these jobs and houses. And like I said, I'll just stop now to let other people talk.
Thank you. Zach Humphries? Approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, council. My name is Zach Humphries. So I've been, one of the passages that my pastor talked about last Sunday was this passage here. James, Chapter 1, Verse 27. Religion that God accepts as pure and faultless is this, to look after orphans and widows in their distress, and to keep oneself from being polluted by the world. I see a council today that loves and cares for all of its people, and we are so honored to have you all represent us. We talk about families a lot in Dunwoody, but never the orphan or the widow. Where do they exist in Dunwoody today? Where can they exist today? The orphans stripped away from their community with only a few allowed to return, and the widow who would really benefit from this project. This council cares for all of its people. Council, I know that this step with this Dominion plan is a step towards the unknown. There isn't a lot of specifics for it. Well, there can't be a lot of facts for this because it is something that has really never been done before, and it's so revolutionary for y'all to do this. And so what I really ask of you, council, is to please do not let the world pollute you. For when you exist in a place of love, you exist as yourself. People will try to make you feel unsure about building this property. They will ask you questions about traffic and specifics and make sure that every little detail is wrapped up in a bow. But I know that this is coming out of a place of love for the people in its community. And I really thank y'all for proposing this project, and it means a lot. You know, we can, I really ask of council to pass this for the widows this time, and I'm saying widows metaphorically, I'm not saying specific widows. And you know, maybe next time, we can look at the orphans. Please do not let the unsureness and, and in my opinion, a lot of hate pollute you from coming from that core place of love for the people here in this community. So please, please pass this. Thank you.
Cheryl Strickland? Okay. Just so you know, the cards aren't good for the second hearing. It's just first come, first served. Okay. Dan Weber? Later. Okay, again, cards don't matter for that. David Ziskin, you'll have three minutes. Please approach the microphone.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is David Ziskin. I live in District 2 in Meadow Lake. As you can see, this is the popular place to be in Dunwoody this evening. There are a number of important issues on tonight's agenda. While you've heard, and I'm sure will continue to hear, opinions on the specific issues, I'm speaking now to request that you, for these and all issues, clearly state your reasoning when you take a position and vote. Furthermore, I'd remind you that you represent your neighbors, our neighbors, and that your decision should reflect what is best for the citizens of Dunwoody, not what is best for city staff or developers. It is okay for you to disagree with staff. It is okay for you to disagree with developers. It's even okay for you to disagree with our fellow citizens who elected you. But your neighbors, our neighbors, deserve transparency. We deserve understanding and explanation for your decisions. Thank you.
Juan Lago? Okay, did I have it close? Your last name? Yeah, I got it right.
Pretty phonetic.
Yeah. You'll have three minutes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna try to make this as short as possible, and the guy that doesn't want Dunwoody to turn into Midtown. So I'm back again. I'd like to say one of the things about the project of Dominion that doesn't make sense to me. There is already over 1,000 apartment units within a short distance of here. And I've looked at the rents that Dominion offers and all their other units in Decatur and around Atlanta, and at least the one and two bedrooms that I could find are right in the same range of what the local apartments offer. There's vacant. There are vacancies in all the apartments. So what the heck are we doing? Is bringing in more people into the area in a building that's not compatible with the plan for the city? That makes no sense to me. I realize that there is some pressure possibly on City Council about the for potential foreclosure of one of the buildings, maybe two of them behind them, the office buildings. I want you to remember that the great thing about the American economy is that failure breeds improvement. Those buildings are probably going to go away. They're going to get foreclosed and they're going to be cheap enough that somebody can come in and replace them with something that makes a lot more sense in our city, be it multiple housing, be it whatever, but not a massive apartment complex where it shouldn't be. So that's my basic point on that. You've all agreed in the city plan that there will be no six-story structures over there. I think that's awesome. Again, as you come up into the residential part of Dunwoody, it would be great to continue to maintain or improve the view that we have as we move into the Dunwoody Village and our quote-unquote old core area. And, and that's really basically my comment. Your job is basically to look for the citizens. I live in Dunwoody Commons. We're basically down at the other end of Ashford Center Parkway. We have twenty-four homes. I don't have a single neighbor that wants this project in the area. I don't know what the people across the street do. I do know that I've heard that nobody else around it wants it here. So I agree with the person I said, if you do approve this thing, you better have a darn good reason why. Thank you.
Joe Hirsch. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. As you know, it's, it's nice to recognize outstanding officers at the beginning of each meeting. But you should also find out what's really going on in our police department. I've not heard any of you comment. Perhaps you'll share with us about the police officer who accidentally shot himself last week. I presume you knew about it, but you know, it's important for us to know about these things. More, more than ever, transparency is vital in this world we live in. And as you know, a Dunwoody cop several years ago essentially held people hostage. And when I tried to find out about it with open records requests, I was met by Sharon Lowry, Clerk Eric Shealy, and Ginger LaPage, who conspired to lie to me to protect then-police chief Billy Grogan. You know they lied. The city has put up no defenses. It's a fact. So it brought me to begging y'all for help. None of you would do anything. Our city manager, Eric Linton, who himself is being sued for destroying his phone records. Yes, he is. No one would help. So it brought me to a lawsuit, and y'all have done nothing. To this point, we're at four hundred thousand dollars. That's what the city is on the hook for when this is all said and done, because you're going to lose. Do you feel comfortable with that? Do you really want to try and defend Sharon, who you know lied to me? Eric Shealy, who lied to me? Ginger LaPage? Eric Linton? Is that the move you want to take? I want you to know that my finances are great. If your strategy is going to try and bankrupt me, no. But I feel terrible what's happening to the taxpayers of this city. Because you're wasting money fighting transparency, defending people in our city who should not be employed by our city. That's a bad move. Sadly, my attorney, who's helped me on this case, has some health issues, and so he's had to step aside. But the good news is, my new attorney is a former Metro Atlanta city councilman himself. So he's looked at everything from this case, and he is aghast and appalled at how horrible you all are up here on City Council. We have no respect for you. You don't deserve it. You're wasting the taxpayers' money defending the indefensible. Transparency is important. None of you have demonstrated courage, ethics, morals, or leadership to help foster a better city. None of you. It's a shame. Let's go. I'm ready for a trial. Bring it on. I feel very confident. My new attorney says he's going to tear you a new one, and he's going to. I, I, I presented the city with probably about twenty-five pages of suggestions to help with open records. Y'all have not even acknowledged reading them. I've been trying to help. All you do is fight transparency. It's disgusting. And you're going to lose, so ponder that. Thank you.
Mayor Shortall. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Dennis Shortall, twenty-eleven Woodland Way. Tonight, Council, you're going to hear from a former state senator who was instrumental in us becoming a city. You're going to hear from one of our original city council members about the Dominion Project, who was, wrote much of the ethos that we live by in, in the city. And you heard from the guy that you're looking at here was the co-chairman of Dunwoody, yes. We've knocked on four thousand doors and we created an eighty-one percent approval rate to become a city. All with one purpose. We're here to ask you to deny the the changing of the zoning and the property over here on Ashford Dunwoody Road to in favor of Dominion Projects. Dominion Projects, I've looked around at some of their projects. One of them is down in Southwest Atlanta, right off of Two Eighty-Five. Not, not an area equal to Dunwoody whatsoever. But the, the five things we decided, we just, we discussed with the city, citizens of this city when we became a city was, number one, zoning and zoning to protect the single-family homes, residents. Two, keep taxes low, be good stewards of your tax dollars. Three, create a purse, force that's adequate size to protect the citizens. Four, take over the city parks. And five, the, the last thing was to fix the infrastructure of the city, fixing the first worst. You know, one of the things when we were sitting up for the funeral, we pushed for townhomes were to protect the citizens that wanted to downsize and love this city so that they could still sit, live, live here when they downsize. And they're, they're highly successful over in the village, down in Georgetown, over by the Old City Hall, highly successful townhomes that are affordable and can, people can move into them when they want to downsize. So listen to your citizens instead of just listening to yourself and think about what you're going to vote on tonight. You're going to vote on something that's very transitional. And we don't want it here in the city. All of these folks here are pretty much ninety-five percent against it. So think about it before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Yes, that concludes the cards I have. If I missed you, let me know. Okay, I don't see anybody. All right. All right, Sharon, you are on to read whenever you're ready. Oh, but I want to make a few statements actually as we begin this section. I think there has been some confusion in the community. Maybe there was an article with the mistake in it. We vote on the items we're about to begin, the public hearing from two to six. Nothing gets voted on tonight. This is called a first read. It's defined, the process for zoning is defined by state law. The calendar is laid out by state law, and all local governments in Georgia have to follow the schedule, this, you know, this many days, this many weeks, this much time between reads. And so between number two and six, those items, we will not be voting on tonight. Three, four, five, six will be back before us on Sept- no, earlier than September eighth. No, not residential, not, no. Number two may come back in two weeks, but it also may wait till September eighth. It's a text ordinance change. And I think that was all I needed, so go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, the first item, first public, public hearing is an ordinance to amend Chapter Twenty-seven, the zoning ordinance of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances, to amend zoning regulations and procedures for group living uses and other purposes.
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor. Good, good evening, Council. First case is a text amendment to group living users. You'll remember this one. This is sort of an addendum to the regulations that were passed in July of twenty twenty-four for community residences and recovery communities. And just as a repeat, as a reminder, those are residential facilities, those are facilities where people live, who generally have protections under federal law, including the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disability Act. We've conducted a legal review that has recommended certain changes. Those changes are what's in front of you today. And it consists of three items that you'll find throughout the ordinance. The first one is a clarification that users like personal care homes, assisted living communities, intermediate care homes are in fact classified as community residences. That was the intent behind, behind the ordinance change. And the, the amendment in front of you just clarifies that more clearly. The second one addresses a legal standard. The legal standard is how you all have to review certain evidence in front of you. For the special land use permits that are associated with this, there used to be a reference in there to the clear and convincing evidence standard. That'll be struck to where it goes with the regular standard that is part of the zoning ordinance. And then lastly, there are other minor changes that are clarifying the approval process and the contents of the operations plan that is required for such uses. Planning Commission has seen this in a public hearing on July eighth and has recommended unanimous approval. That meeting, no one spoke in favor on opposition, and we haven't heard anything. Since then, we have our legal counsel present, if you all have any questions. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the, uh, public hearing. Unless there's an objection, seeing no objection, the public hearing is open. And I will open the floor to those in favor of this text ordinance change. Each side will have ten minutes. All right, I see no one. Oh, you have to come, so for, you have to come up here, sorry. If you want to speak in favor, you may line up behind Mr. Humphries. Uh, go ahead, Zach. You'll have ten minutes. Maybe, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna need ten minutes. I think that anything that reaffirms and upholds the Fair Housing Act is desperately needed and very important, especially the Americans with Disability Act as well. I am in full support of this, and I thank Council and our legal team for looking into this and trying to build a better Dunwoody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone who wants to speak is opposed to this? If you oppose, you can approach the microphone. That's probably a better way. All right, I don't see anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And unless there's an objection, seeing no objection, the public hearing is closed. This is for, I guess, questions for staff. Want to come back, Paul? Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? Maybe Paul doesn't have to come back? Go ahead.
This is a recommendation from, from legal, I think.
Right. Put this stuff on consent, like this one. It doesn't matter. It's, it's fine. I don't know if you can put a second read on consent. All right, there's no questions, so we will see this again. Is it possible to have this on the agenda in two weeks because it's not a rezoning?
Yes, we can bring it back.
After the public hearing, the next time you, when you get a vote, you could put it on a consent agenda.
Is consent? All right, so this will be on consent, but we'll do it in two weeks, please. Thank you.
Mayor, item number three is an ordinance to amend the City of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of Lot Parcel Number Eighteen Three Fifty Zero Three Zero Zero Three in consideration of zoning case RZ Twenty-five dash O-two for Forty-five Seventy Ashford Dunwoody Road from OI Office Institution District zoning classification to PC One Perimeter Center District.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The case before you currently is requested by Raising Canes to rezone from Office Institution to PC dash one. Just to note, when this application was originally submitted, it was submitted as both a rezoning from OI to PC dash one and a special land use permit for a drive-through. The drive-through component contained the request that was presented by Raising Canes. But at the June tenth Planning Commission meeting, the applicant requested to essentially split their application into two so that they could be considered separately. This is because the property owner is very interested in allowing this rezoning to PC dash one because it will allow them to expand the allowed uses on the property. But they didn't want a denial of the rezoning to affect, or excuse me, a denial of a special land use permit to affect the approval of a rezoning. So the current request before you this evening is just for the rezoning from OI to PC dash one, and it would not be tied to a site plan. It would just be tied to the general PC dash one zoning district. All development of the property under just the PC dash one district would be subject to those building standards of that zoning district. The PC dash one, or excuse me, the plenty, the perimeter center zoning district regulations in general are form-based. So they take into consideration a lot of design requirements. For example, building buildings up to the street, making streetscape improvements, limiting surface parking. But there is not a site plan before you this evening, and I just wanted to preface this. I know this one is a little, a little confusing. And I'm here to answer any other questions you have about the project. But I'll just go through the requirements for the rezoning this evening. A little bit of background on the property. This is the, an existing fifteen thousand square foot, two-story former drive-through bank. It was previously the Wells Fargo Drive-Thru Bank. And that has vacated for a significant period of time. It was formerly a drive-through, but when any use has been abandoned for six months, it is no longer considered legal non-conforming, i.e. it is not grandfathered in anymore. So that is why they are going to have to ask for a special land use permit at a future meeting. But continuing on, there is a forty-five space surface parking lot. They have existing access onto Ashford Dunwoody Road. That current curb cut, which is adjacent to the McDonald's curb cut, is considered legal non-conforming because those two drive-throughs are too close together. The property also has access through the Lemeridian Hotel property via incement, and it also has pro, incement through the North Italia property. And the access through the North Italia property gives them access to the signalized entrance at Ashford Dunwoody Road and the terraces. So again, there is no specific site plan proposal associated with the rezoning itself. Again, this would all be subject, any development for just the rezoning portion would be subject to the PC dash one zoning district. And the specific site plan associated with the special land use permit for the drive-through again will be presented to you at a future meeting date after the Planning Commission has provided the recommendation on it. I'm going to walk you through the rezoning approval criteria. So again, they're asking to go from OI to PC dash one. The PC dash one district is the zoning district that is called for as part of the regulating map for this area, so that is totally in line with the vision for this area. Development of, you know, the property commercially would be appropriate for this site. It's adjacent to a hotel and to other restaurants. And so any development within that realm would certainly be acceptable there. The current zoning district of OI is, is a pretty restrictive zoning district. It doesn't allow for any, you know, traditional retail or restaurant development. It really is focused on office and medical uses. When we're looking at the economic use of the property, the existing bank building is vacant. We've had a lot of vacant drive-through banks that have closed down in recent years and have sort of vacant drive through banks that have closed down in recent years and have sort of sat vacant for long periods of time. And so allowing this property to go to a zoning district with a more broad range of uses allowed would definitely give this a lot more economic potential. And in general, the variety of uses permitted by the conditions of this rezoning case are appropriate for this area. Rather than allowing the full broad range of all of the allowed uses for the PC dash one district. For the zoning conditions for this specific rezoning, we have recommended, you know, a smaller list of allowed uses, which, you know, is a strategy that you can utilize, you know, on rezonings with conditions. And it's really restricting it to just the kinds of commercial uses that are, you know, more active, those types of retail and restaurant uses and personal service uses. Personal services include things like hair salons and gyms. The changing office market does provide support for rezoning this parcel. There's a lot of office vacancy right now, and it is much harder to fill these kind of smaller office parcels. Again, this rezoning would give the property owner more flexibility to explore other uses on this site. Overall, to staff's knowledge, there's no historical or archaeological resources on this site. You know, again, there is that nonconforming curb cut. But the current, excuse me, the former drive through use, you know, drive through banks are, you know, pretty high generator of traffic, according to the trip generation manual. It's higher than pretty much any other retail use you could possibly have. And any other sort of sit down restaurant use, except for like quick service restaurants and drive through restaurants. And we see that any use that's sort of below the intensity of that kind of drive through to not really be putting any extra pressure on that nonconforming drive through. So I just wanted to note that. At the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did vote to approve the rezoning, so they do recommend approval for the rezoning. They also recommended deferral of the special land use permit to the August twelfth Planning Commission meeting. Or excuse me, the September Planning Commission meeting. And so that special land use permit will be reviewed in September, and then it would be back to you all later this year for a vote. I don't have a specific date on that yet. We have not done the advertisements, but it will be later in the fall. At this meeting, there were three public comments. There was one comment in support of the rezoning, and that came from the property owner. And there were two comments in opposition to the drive through use specifically, so I just wanted to note that. And the staff recommendation is to approve the rezoning subject to these three conditions. Again, like I discussed earlier, we would recommend the uses be limited to what's listed in condition number one. And number two would be some streetscape improvements, meaning they would have to close the median. I don't know if you're familiar with the existing site right now, but there's that median break near the drive through entrance to McDonald's. And that median break is also considered nonconforming, so we would like any future, you know, development of that property to include the closing of that median, just so it prevents unsafe turn movements. And then the third condition is that the owner would convey the necessary right of way for future streetscape improvements. This would be along a portion of the Ashford Dunwoody Trail. So again, staff is recommending approval subject to these conditions. The applicant for this project also has a presentation available for you this evening, and I will turn the mic over to them.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harold Buckley. I'm with Wilson Brock and Irving, twenty eight forty nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta.
Will you slow down a little bit so the clerk can get your name, please?
I'm sorry, Harold Buckley.
Thank you.
Wilson Brock and Irving, twenty eight forty nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I'm here on behalf of Raising Canes this evening. And we are, as you've heard, asking for your approval of our application to rezone the property. We did submit two applications, one to rezone the property because our current ONI zoning doesn't allow restaurants of any kind on the property. And we also asked for a special land use permit to allow that restaurant to have a drive through. That special land use permit is fairly complicated. And so we're still working with the staff to iron out concerns that they have relative to the drive through. But we are also working with the property owner who we would lease this property from. And as we move through this process, they have gotten very nervous about the the prospect of the rezoning application being denied because of opposition to the special land use permit or the the staff's concerns. The reason they got, they've become uncomfortable is because if that rezoning is denied, the zoning ordinance imposes a waiting period. They could not resubmit any rezoning application, I believe it's for two years. And so in order to maintain that level of comfort, we need to keep that deal alive. We have asked the Planning Commission to send this forward to you. We agree with the staff's conditions. I just want to give you a a brief presentation on our development plan. We do have a development plan. We're just asking you not to condition any approval of the rezoning on that because that may change as we talk to the staff, the community and the planning commission. Madeline has already oriented you to the site. This is the old bank facility there. You see it had four drive throughs as part of that operation. This is our current site plan. As Madeline described, we have one driveway coming from Ashford Dunwoody. We have agreed to close the Ashford Dunwoody curb median, excuse me, at our expense. And we also have two inner access points at the rear of our property, one to the La Meridian Hotel and the other across the North Italia site. One of, if you look at the the site plan, we have our building pulled up to the street in accordance with the perimeter center regulations. It currently, the site plan currently shows a drive through in the back. Again, if you approve our rezoning, you are not approving that drive through. This is just the development proposal right now as it exists. Excuse me, and that drive through and the parking lot are located behind the building. This is a rendering of the the proposed restaurant along Ashford Dunwoody Road. We don't know what the final design is going to be for the pedestrian trail across the front of our property. So we've just put in a placeholder here for representative purposes. You can see that we do have an entrance directly accessible from the trail. And that would allow folks on the trail to actually walk into the restaurant and enjoy the services that we provide. This is an aerial view of the Ashford Dunwoody frontage. In addition to the building that we are proposing, we have a large screening wall. That wall is going to screen view of the rear of the property from Ashford Dunwoody. So you don't have a drive through impacting the character of the roadway there. Instead, you see this screening wall. We also have an outdoor dining patio that is going to socially connect with that pedestrian trail. A trail is nice, but you really, like sidewalks, need to activate that to make it a pleasant walking experience. If the trail environment is dead, then you don't have a very enjoyable experience walking on it. Here you will have folks outdoors dining and interacting at least visually with the folks on the trail. This is a view of the rear of the site, and you can see that's where the drive through would be located along with the the parking lot. One thing I did not point out is that we do have bike racks. So if you're on the trail and you are on a bike, we will have a place for you to tie up and lock your bike. Come in, have a meal, get back on your bike and keep going on your way. One of the things that we have changed because this site plan is changing. Originally, we showed our drive through coming straight down the back of the restaurant to the to this area. It was coming straight through. And one of the concerns was that is bringing cars right there at the the access point that crosses the trail. We have curved that driveway to go toward the back of the property in response to those comments. And again, we're still revising. But that does two things. It provides a way for us to provide a protected access for our customers who park on the site to get past that drive through. And it also creates more distance between the cars and the trail so that you reduce the potential for conflicts between vehicles using the drive through and people walking on the trail. This is a view of the interior of the restaurant. All of our restaurants are locally themed. You know, young professionals, college students love hanging out in these places because they have quirky details like our disco ball and the other things that we do on the inside of the restaurant. So for all of those reasons, we ask for your approval of the rezoning application, the special land use permit application. I believe is scheduled to come before you on September the ninth, which is the day after you would have your second read on this application.
All right. Unless there's an objection, I'm going to open the public hearing. Seeing no objections, the public hearing is open. I'm going to open the floor. I'll offer ten minutes for those in favor of this application. If you'll come up to the microphone, the first person line up. I see no one. Oh, somebody's coming in favor. Okay. Sharon, are y'all ready? Okay, go right. Please introduce yourself and say your name slowly.
Michael Rock.
That works. Thank you for following directions.
Thank you, Gold Star. All right. Thanks, everybody, for a couple of minutes to talk about this, and that's great to see the presentation that was just brought together. I've seen several of these in the past regarding this property. I wanted to offer some supporting remarks. I have, as the social guru that I am, I say that cheekily. I made three posts in the Dunwoody Forum about this particular property over the past couple of months. Over two hundred likes, over two hundred comments, mostly from folks who were saying that they have kids. So these are families who are extremely excited about this property. Okay, so I know Dunwoody is home to a lot of families. So I just wanted you to understand that whoever you may hear from in this room, there are a lot more people outside of this room that are very fond of this brand and we're excited at the proposal or prospect of us getting it. Regarding the current space, there are currently seven drive through lanes on that property. I know they're for a bank. But I'm glad to hear the commentary earlier that banks do produce a tremendous amount of traffic. This one's got seven drive through lanes. I don't know why, but it does. And we're worried about, I think, now too. So I think that's an interesting comparison to bring forward. The three entry and exit points were brought up. I appreciate that. Let's do a quick comparative. So next door to this property immediately for the uninitiated is a plus twenty year old McDonald's that I think a lot of us might agree is in need of some refreshing. It's an older property. It certainly isn't one to look at. If you look at that, it's got two drive through lanes, a similar number of parking spaces, and the entry and exit points are far more precarious. Particularly the one when you're making a left turn off near the mall. It's right at a light, but the entrance is immediately to the right after that. I know we've had some incidents involving vehicles there. So you already have a precedence for a pretty poorly planned project. I think we've seen that this one's got a lot more thought put into it. For comparatives, again, an average McDonald's generates about two and a half million dollars in revenue a year or seventy three hundred dollars a day. And they're doing just fine with that. The property seems to be running smoothly. We need a few more businesses here that aren't going to up and leave after six months. We've had a lot of turnover. It'd be nice to get somebody who can stick around for a little while. Not to mention contribute to our tax revenue, which I think we all agree the city would be happy to take and receive. We could use it. Again, for comparative, the Dunkin' Donuts at Shambly Dunwoody in town. That often backs up into the street. That is a real problem. I don't know that any of us on this border in this room are going to go ask Dunkin' Donuts to shut down simply because they have a successful business, right? We all seem to get around that just fine. Some more comparatives, the drive throughs that currently are in Dunwoody. There are three Chick Fil A's. One is a double drive through in the middle of a neighborhood. Doesn't seem to have any problems there. I don't know anybody in here who's upset about that. Three Starbucks, two McDonald's, two Dunkin' Donuts and a Burger King. I've not heard a single person come in here and complain about any of those businesses. They're all drive throughs and they all seem to be doing just just fine. I understand the applicant has made a number of requests or has had a number of requests made of them. I'm glad to see that all of them have been addressed, particularly the traffic flow with the curb cut. The accommodations for the trails that another city is excited to bring in. I think we're all excited about that. I don't see any issues there. So that's nice to see that the property is also in interest of being well maintained. For the uninitiated, again, I didn't hear it in the presentation, but I'm sure they'd like a chance to come back and tell you that the landscaping investment on this property is significant and that it is part of the performance package of the property. That that landscaping also be maintained by the store. So you're not going to see stuff go in, turn to garbage, and then us wonder why anybody isn't keeping it up. I don't know if McDonald's is doing such a good job there. You might want to check that. Also, the curb cuts in the back and the reassignment of the drive through to the back of the property, I think, is a plus. It addressed some of the earlier concerns that everybody had about that traffic spilling out into the road. Well, thank you for a good partner for addressing that in a meaningful way. So if, in conclusion, I'm not going to take all the ten minutes here. If we decide to decline this project and we do so because we're going to claim it's too successful, it generates too much traffic, what in the world will be saying to any other business that wants to come do business in Dunwoody? We don't want you here because you generate too much money and too much tax revenue? Is that really the message that we want to send? And this is not me standing here. This is, again, I'm providing you a lot of context for people who are very interested. The community wants this and is interested in this. It fits the character of the area, then it's in the right spot. I think the approval of the zoning request proves that it's next door to a property that's similar in nature. It's in the right place. It's the right time in that property that is there now. As many people would agree, is derelict and has been vacant for far too long. We've got to get something in that space. This is a willing partner, a long term partner. The owner is from Georgia. He's doing extremely well at the property. Or excuse me, the brand itself is growing by leaps and bounds. This isn't somebody who's going to come in and leave after five months. And I think we can all appreciate that. So the last thing I'll say fairly cheekily is, you know, if we don't do this, the only reason would be is because we're chicken. You here till Thursday?
Sharon, how much time remains? Four minutes, all right. Approach the microphone, say your name slowly so our clerk can get it, and then you'll have up to four minutes.
Okay, well, I don't have four minutes to talk about, but my name is Alyssa Presley. I'm at one five three two Dunwoody Club Crossing. I don't have anything really prepared for this, but this property has been dying on the vine for many years. I used to have an office in there when I was employee of Wells Fargo. As we know, banking has changed almost all online. So even when it was occupied, it was dying. And now it's been vacant. And the only time I've been back to that building since it was vacant was when we were doing the homeless census and walking around and seeing a small encampment behind the building. And that is frankly what you get with abandoned properties. This is a very successful franchise. I kind of think back to when Chick Fil A wanted to put a a location in the parking lot there at Mount Vernon and I guess Dunwoody Club Drive where the Chase is now. And I think we could all agree that Chick Fil A would have brought a lot more to that development than the Chase has. No, no shade on Chase. But we're looking to bring successful businesses who have track records of success and can sustain themselves to the city and bring in investment around the the area. So this is a very successful business. And what we have there now is breeding nothing but frankly, danger to the community. So I speak in support. Thank you.
You'll, how much time left, Sharon? Ali? Two minutes. Go ahead, Ali.
Hello, City Council. My name is Ali Mapwood. Thank you for letting me speak. I also speak highly in favor of this. I think the first gentleman did a fantastic job of getting very tactical with the numbers. I am going to generally speak a little bit more, maybe on the emotional side of it. But anyways, I've actually come to one of the meetings and spoke about this in the past. But, um, anyways, I've actually come to one of the meetings and spoke about this in the past. I have come to, I had the special meeting, I think, with the board of something, whatever, on one of those days. I've heard all of these things. So I am, as a resident here, I walk down Ashford Dunwoody all the time. So I, I get a lot of foot traffic walking there. And that's really important because I don't think this is going to cause issues to that. In fact, it might, will it make it more dangerous? Uh, I think we'll be fine. Uh, I drive down Ashford Dunwoody all the time. After this, I'll be driving to Sockers. So I'll be taking that. I'm, I'm not really worried about the stress of the traffic onto it. I'm far more excited about the idea that we can have chicken on a Sunday. Um, so but the idea of Raising Canes is fantastic. I went to Raising Canes. So I'm a New Orleans boy. So as they say, you can take the boy out of New Orleans. You can't take the New Orleans out of him. And so I went to Raising Canes actually about two weeks ago. It was delightful. Um, I kind of, I've seen what they've done in the community. I think he's right about the artistic styles of them. It's, it's fantastic. And I could just kind of go on, uh, for a little bit more about how I think this is a great idea on the economic side. Just on the, uh, attention it's going to bring to Dunwoody. I don't think it's going to cannibalize any businesses. I think it'll bring a lot more traffic in the sense of good energy, in the sense of, uh, more people interested in eating in Dunwoody. So I speak far in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think that concludes our in favor. Is there anyone who would like to speak opposed? You can approach the microphone and introduce yourself. And say your name slowly, please.
Evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Munoz. I'm the general manager at the Limeridian just behind the, uh, proposed sites. And so I think that I'm impacted a little differently than maybe some of the other sites or community. And so I might have some, uh, unique perspective. Um, for a non-special land use permit, we're talking a lot about drive-throughs. So my question or my request would be, uh, simply on the, the merits of the rezoning that there could be a limiting factor that we discussed. There were a few recommendations from staff where it would, uh, maybe not include quick service dining because any quick service dining brings the same risks to my business, my owners, my insurance costs, the pedestrians that walk. Um, the 80,000 room nights I do a year of guests that stay at the hotel, they would have those same risks, uh, really with most of the quick service. Um, which is why I'm glad to try to find a neighbor that would fit in the current zoning or to limit a re, um, a rezoning to not include the types that bring the most possible traffic. Um, you know, anecdotally, I lived in Woodstock. I think I've discussed this in front of this group before. And I've rarely seen a bank that needs police officers to guide the traffic. I actually can't think of a time. And so while at a time, I think that that bank brought a lot of traffic at a different time, at a different stage of development of the city. I think now, um, it's probably a little bit different. And so to compare those two might not be the, the apples to apples comparison that, that maybe was being drawn. Uh, and then also, you know, I spend more time cleaning up the trash there than anyone in this room. Uh, the only person that, that splits that burden with me is the, uh, the GM of the North Italian, the GM of the McDonald's who, um, you know, speaking on that McDonald's, he does a pretty good job and we try really hard to keep it up. So I would love to see someone come into that area. I would love another business to bring more room nights, which creates more jobs because I am a job creator in this market. I've got 103 employees. I'm trying to pump that number up. Um, but I think maybe there's a way to do it that doesn't put a third of that traffic right in front of my front door. No other business will have a third of those cars drive. It's closer than we are now. That's how close my drive is, um, where the door is to where the curb is. And I have a roundabout in front of my building, which I know doesn't impact people in this room. But there are ways that, um, if my hotel were to be impacted from getting insurance to losing customers over it, um, that might have a trickle-down effect that wouldn't be as ideal as maybe something that didn't have, you know, the, the same cars per hour that maybe a restaurant, uh, with doing quick service would. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this application? Uh, seeing none, I closed this public help hearing unless there's an objection. And, uh, ask council to, uh, if they have any questions, comments. Uh, John, go ahead.
I have a question for Steph. I really appreciate Mr. Munoz, your, your comments, by the way. Uh, my comments were really going to be about the process of splitting. Um, how we had an application process. We went through a bunch of public hearings. We had mass mailings and everybody come to a meeting and talk about this project drive-through. I remember seeing the hotel was against this project, maybe because of the drive-through. Was there another set of meetings where we had an open public discussion where the drive-through wasn't part of this, uh, project?
So at the last, uh, planning commission meeting back in June, the applicant proposed to split the rezonings. Um, and the planning commission actually did at that meeting, opened the floor to public comment, even though it wasn't technically a public hearing. So there was public comment at that meeting. And also the advertisements for this project have always been very explicit that it is a rezoning from OI to PC with a special land use permit for the drive-through. Um, for this public hearing specifically, it was also advertised as the rezoning from OI to PC. And the next time that the special land use permit, um, comes before the city council, prior to that, it will be advertised as a special land use permit for a drive-through. Um, and you know, as always, um, this request, if it had come to you together, would have required separate motions.
Yet we get presentations from the developer showing drive-through, 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 pictures of us pretty drive-through and how he's moved it and what he's done with it. So to me, you're, you're not really splitting the baby. And again, I appreciate the comments, both pro and con. Um, there was just a, a, a mention of quick service dining. What is the definition of quick service dining? Is that drive-through only? Is that an Uber order and they come and pick it up? What's, what is the definition of quick service dining? And the, uh, we had a public comment asking that that be outlawed. Is that for drive-through only or what is that?
We do not have a defined use that it, that says quick service restaurant or quick service driving, uh, quick service restaurant. Um, I think that's more of like an industry term. Um, and I don't necessarily know the specifics of it. What's defined in our code is, uh, restaurants and drive-throughs. I would say a, uh, sit-down restaurant, uh, is typically not going to be a quick service. And a restaurant with a drive-through is basically always going to be a quick service.
Right. I'm not against this rezoning in the sense of what it's offering for the current, what's in front of us today. I like the conditions. I want the conditions to go forward. Uh, hopefully, um, uh, again, I'm looking forward to more comment from my fellow council members, but we're not talking about a drive-through today. We're not voting on a drive-through today. We shouldn't be looking at a drive-through today. But, uh, those are my comments and I appreciate your time. So thank you.
Uh, Tom?
Thank you. Hopefully that reaches, um, yeah. So just, just to follow up again, to be clear, we're, uh, going to be, uh, voting on at the next, uh, time this comes up is the rezoning itself. And the rezoning itself is pretty straightforward to me. Uh, the PC one is far more in line with our comprehensive plan and the current OI. To me, it's, it's straightforward. It is a little bit confusing because we're seeing kind of a preview of what's to come next. Um, while we have the site plan, even though I know we're not, that's not related to this. Um, I do have a question. Um, and it's related to the dumpster location. Um, I have, I have two concerns with that. Uh, the first is, I can imagine why it was placed there, convenience of the driveway in to get it and get out. However, the driveway in appears to be the one that comes from Limeridian. So you're basically putting a, a garbage truck through another neighboring piece of property to come and collect the dumpster. That, I, that doesn't seem like a, a neighborly thing to do. So I would, I would request another location. And the other reason the, the, the location struck me as weird is, uh, from a practical standpoint, it is literally right next to the, uh, the order board. Uh, dumpsters generally don't smell very nice. Uh, so I can't imagine it being very appetizing to come in and order your food and be smelling a dumpster right next to your car. And it's also pretty close to the patio area as well. So on a hot sunny day, and we get a lot of those here in Dunwoody. Um, I just, I just feel that the proximity of that dumpster to a dining area and the order area might not be that appealing. So, uh, from a practical standpoint for the business, it might be, while they're looking at new site plan configurations, uh, perhaps look, locating it to another area, but also so that it's not as much of a burden on the neighboring properties with a garbage truck having a drive-through, perhaps closer to the Ashford Dunwoody location might be a better spot.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Rob.
I, I know the answer to this. I just want confirmation. So, um, looking at this just for this rezoning with no drive-through, the curb cut on Ashford Dunwoody would be conforming if it wasn't a, a restaurant with a drive-through, correct?
It's still non-conforming regardless of the use. What we're looking at is, are we making the condition of that non-conformity worse by forcing more traffic through it?
So if a where would, where would, how, where would it need to be relocated to be conforming? Just out of curiosity.
So there is not necessarily a, uh, perfectly conforming location for the drive-through because of the closeness of the North Italia curb cut as well. Um, there's areas where you could sort of lessen the non-conformity, um, but it would sort of still be non-conforming because of North Italia.
All right. So it, it's almost just going to grandfather in the location, it sounds like, unless somebody proposes to change it as part of a, an application that requires.
I'm, I'm sorry. What, what's the question exactly?
It, it the staff recommendation is to leave the cur- current curb cut where it's located.
Correct. There's no condition for moving.
Thank you. That's, that's why I'm just, thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Yeah. I personally, I mean, a restaurant here would be consistent with what's on either side of it. Uh, I'm ignoring the drive-through because that's a whole separate issue, but, uh, I'm, I'm okay with PC one on this.
Stacy?
I just had a quick question with, um, the, the zoning to the north is C1, to the south is C1, and then O and I, no CR. But it all, and it says for future land use, all of it would be PC one. So all the surrounding properties for any future land use would need to be zoned PC one as well. That's what I'm reading in the memo. Is that correct?
Um, it could be.
It could be.
The, yeah, they have the option. So they're currently under the, um, sort of older zoning districts. Um, but for anyone that wants to do a future project there. Um, and if it's not in line with the current regulations, they would be asked to rezone. And they would be asked to rezone to whatever's on that regular.
Yeah. Which is all PC one. So in my mind, it, you know, all the surroundings, they would have to be PC one as well. So it's really appropriate for that, for the reason.
I have some questions and comments. My first question is because a, a wise former late Dunwoody resident said, when the Chick-fil-A that someone referred to was uh, on the agenda a million years ago in the old, what was then the old Blockbusters and the Jet Ferry, uh, Mount Vernon parking lot, he said, when it was Chick-fil-A trying to apply, he reminded people that it could be any fast food restaurant. That is correct. Yes.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's important for everyone to understand that while it is Restaurant A, uh, applying, it could be Restaurant Z, which you might not find as attractive as Restaurant A. So I think that's a really important. Uh, for me, it's, it's critical as we think about these kinds of applications. Um, so that's that. The second thing, um, is, is that I'm having a really hard time splitting the baby. For months, well, we're splitting the baby. Um, for months, we have viewed this as one project. We've heard about it. We've read about it. To John's point, the public advertised meeting where the letters were sent to the neighbors was one project. And now it's, we're supposed to sort of pretend that it's two applications, which it is. It's hard for me to unsee what I've already seen. Um, the, the zoning change request is not inappropriate. Except it's not, it's not inappropriate. I don't love the limited uses. I'm going to have to, before our next meeting, figure out what's missing. Because here's my perspective. My perspective is, is unlike many of our surrounding cities, we have one main commercial drive. And it's Ashford Dunwoody Road. It's it. I love Dunwoody Village, but the Dunwoody Village is going to be Dunwoody Village. What we do on this road, on Ashford Dunwoody Road, is going to be here forever. And we're, I understand that there's property that's waiting to be redeveloped. I get that. There's going to be more property waiting to be redeveloped. But there is, and there's a push and pull, a ying and yang, whatever you want to say about when you jump at an application or you jump at an offer. But for me, this, this is not my vision for Ashford Dunwoody Road, and I'll leave it at that. I also want, um, to ask you a question because the, the reason we're doing this is the fact that the property owner is nervous about, is it a one year? I think it's, is it one year or two year that if you denied? But council has the ability to waive that, correct?
Yes.
Yes, right? We can waive that. So, um, I really wish we were seeing all this at once. I do. This is, um, uh, it's not my idea period of what I'd want at that spot. I frankly had had that communication for many years with Saxby's. Um, or who, uh, not Saxby's, um, Raising Canes. But that's fine. And, um, but the important takeaways I want people to take away from this is, is that when you rezone it, it can be any use in that rezoning. And so to, just to remember that, one more story, and then I'll stop because we have a big agenda. A zillion years ago, as opposed to a million, we were asked to rezone a bank across the street from Perimeter Mall to Del Taco. Do you remember? I don't even know if we were a city. It might've been under DeKalb County and we followed it. Well, Del Tacos are gone. It might not have been a Del Taco, but it was whatever chain, Caribbean chain, it's gone now. So we didn't approve, it didn't happen. But that's, that's just my two cents on this item. All right. Um, we will see this again on September 8th.
So it'll go back to the planning commission in September and then I will advertise. Again, it's a little bit confusing because of the split, the special.
No, no, no. I'm totally confused. Because, so you're putting the slop back in or are we approving the PC one change separately?
Yeah. The reasoning will be in September, the special land use permit will be at Planning Commission in September.
But we will see this again on September 8th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Splitting the baby. Are you ready, Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Item number four is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel number 1836308008 in consideration of the zoning case RZ 2503 for 4891 Ashford Dunwoody Road from OI Office Institution District zoning classification to PD Plan Development District.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'll be giving the presentation on this project. Um, a summary, a quick summary is that the, um, developer dominium requested zoning from OI, uh, to PD for the construction of an age-restricted multi-unit rental building. Um, the case before you, um, is for a 250, excuse me. The background on this site, for context, this, uh, site is right up the road from City Hall. It's a 3.42 acre site adjacent to the Cube Smart self-storage and assisted living facility called Brighton Gardens. And it's across the street from the Jefferson Apartments, uh, as well as across the street from some office developments and the Dunwoody Baptist Church. It is currently developed with a 15,700 square foot medical office building. Uh, it's the Life South Community Blood Center. The current site has two curb cuts on Ashford Center Parkway. There is no direct access to Ashford Dunwoody Road. The frontage along Ashford Dunwoody Road is slated for the future Ashford Dunwoody Trail. Um, Life South is vacating the building and selling the site. The interested developer is Dominion. They propose to develop with 215, uh, age-restricted and income-restricted apartments. Um, on the right is the site plan. The site is designed to limit surface parking. The main parking area is contained within a parking garage that's incorporated to the overall building. The vehicular access to the site would remain the same. So there are no curb cuts on Ashford Dunwoody Road to impede the trail. Uh, the applicant has coordinated with DeKalb County Fire Marshal's Office and the Public Works Department to design the Ashford Dunwoody path to accommodate emergency access to the building. The path would serve as necessary emergency access. Having a path that can accommodate this, um, allows the building to be designed in accordance with the design guidelines, uh, of the Perimeter Center District. Um, I, this is a side note, but, um, this type of design, um, I think is, um, important. Um, when we're considering the future development of, at, along Ashford Dunwoody Road. Um, there is, uh, the really large transmission lines that, um, go along the front of this property. Um, and those require a lot of like extra space in order to service buildings for. in order to service buildings for emergency access. Um, and the type of space that that needs, um, and the type of access that that needs kind of runs counterintuitive to our design um, ideas for the future of Ashford Dunwoody Road and the type of building we wanna see where buildings are brought to the street, parking is pushed to the back. Um, so I just wanna point out that this type of path design with the incorporated emergency access um, which allows the building to be still on the path and not having a ton of extra asphalt and a whole driveway around the building for emergency access that I just wanna point out is, is a very um, important precedent um, in terms of design. Um, um, I, I digress from my um, from my side uh, conversation there. Um, the um, specific streetscape improvements along Ashford Center Parkway um, are pretty limited. Um, the Public Works Department doesn't have any specific future designs for Ashford Center Parkway right now. So they have not asked the applicant um, to do much to the sidewalk there. Uh, but the applicant is proposing to close that slip lane that goes from Ashford Center Parkway to Ashford Dunwoody Road. Um, which is a very good design move, especially along the Ashford Dunwoody Trail. Um, you don't really want a lot of slip lanes crossing that trail. Um, it increases safety to sort of make people make a full stop before they do a turn movement onto Ashford Dunwoody Road. Um, the development um, for this specific proposal from the developer um, would have age restrictions and income restrictions that are established by the federal tax credit program that the developer uses. Um, and uh, the um, enforcement of that is done through um the um, federal program, um, which is distributed through the state of Georgia's um, Department of Community Affairs. Um, the proposed elevations um, along Ashford Dunwoody Road and Ashford Center Parkway are shown here on the screen. Um, the proposed materials are in accord- in accordance with the standards for the perimeter center area. So the applicant proposes a planned development district. Um, this is a zoning district where the zoning regulations are laid out in a special document called the Overall Development Plan. This is in lieu of following the standard zoning district regulations, like for example, the PC dash three district or the PC two or three district. Um, the applicant was suggested to pursue this zoning route uh, because of the challenging topography of the site. Um, it does slope a lot um, from the southeast corner to the northeast corner. Um, and because of the very specific um uh, form-based code requirements of the PC dash three zoning district, it was triggering really an excess number of variances, um, which would have been a really significant administrative burden. Um, the P D zoning district exists to alleviate these very kinds of issues, um, and allows people to more sort of creatively develop sites without sort of being beholden um, to um, having to request a ton of extra variances. Um, and so that is the point for the overall development plan. Um, the broad strokes of the overall development plan is that it ties the project to the site plan that's been submitted um, as an exhibit. Um, it limits the development to two hundred and fifteen age-restricted multi-unit rentals and parking. No other uses would be permitted on the site without um, coming before council to amend the overall development plan. Um, it also limits the height as it's shown on the elevations. The maximum height, like I said, there's a big grade change, the maximum height at one end is ninety-five feet. Uh, but the height ranges from about sixty-five feet to ninety-five feet um, above grade. Um, I'm going to walk through the approval criteria for the rezoning. Um, I do wanna preface this with a note on the comprehensive plan. Um, uh, staff's analysis is predicated on the twenty twenty to twenty forty comprehensive plan. Um, this is the current adopted guiding policy. Um, I understand that we're in the process of reviewing um a um, twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. Uh, but the draft of that plan was actually not publicly available, um, when any of the rezoning and special land use permit requests um, this evening were submitted, so none of the cases um, had access to that. Um, so I just, you know, wanted to clarify that. Um, you know, we're, we're not explicitly ignoring it, it's just that the guided um, adopted guiding policy document is the twenty twenty to twenty forty comprehensive plan. Um, so when we're looking at its conformity with the comprehensive plan, um the future land use for this area is perimeter center, um, which envisions developments of this scale. Um, the comprehensive plan also encourages expanded housing choice. Um, and specifically senior housing, that was a very big um, component um, of the comprehensive plan, um, and this development specifically does sort of address address that part of the plan um, in a very real way. Um, the perimeter center uh, district also, you know, envisions um, development that um, uses the types of materials that are proposed here, and again, you know, encourages buildings that um, are built, you know, closer to the street and that really address um, trails um, and things like that. Um, and you know, another note is that um, this subject property is also well-suited to senior housing because of its sort of central um, location to both the Dunwoody Village and um the perimeter center. Um, so you know, we see those as um, you know, very harmonious with um, the current comprehensive plan. Um, when we're looking at um, whether it's suitable um, in relation to the adjacent properties. Um, it is directly adjacent to another um, senior living facility that is specifically an assisted living facility. It's adjacent to a self-storage, um, you know, and this would not really conflict with either of those uses. Um, the current property zoning is O dash I. This is sort of a, a common theme with a lot of our rezonings this evening, is that the O I district is very specific in that it really only allows for the office and the medical use. Um, you know, the Edge City two point O um, study that was done recently. Um, you know, demonstrated that we have a very high office vacancy rate. Um, and you know, especially for um, aging office, it's not necessarily um, you know, viable for office. Um, and so you know, redevelopment of this O I properties is really to be expected at this time. Um, when we're looking at um, again, whether um, the existing, whether the proposal will will affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. Um, we don't feel that senior housing is something that would be um, out of step with the um, adjacent properties and nor would it um, adversely affect them. Um, and when we're looking at um, changing conditions, again, as I mentioned previously, um, the office market um, changing does predicate, um, you know, uh, pretty well, a, a redevelopment uh, of this property. Um, and especially, you know, consideration of alternative zoning districts. Um, and again, the proposed use of a senior housing um, development is in line um, with what the comprehensive plan asks for, um, which is um, different options for senior housing, um, and just senior housing in general. Um, when we look at historic building sites, districts or archaeological resources, to our knowledge, there is none of that on, on this existing site. Um, when we look at whether the zoning proposal will result um, in a use that will cause excessive burden on streets and schools, et cetera. Um, the development um, is restricted to only persons aged um, fifty-five plus. Um, the um, developer can speak more to the specifics of that. Um, just a note regarding schools, um Dunwoody Elementary School and Peachtree Middle School, when we last checked the DeKalb website um, last month. Um, those are currently below capacity, while Dunwoody High School is above capacity. Um, but again, um, no persons under fifty-five would be permitted um, on this property. Um, and when you look at the um, trip generation. Um, so you can look at it from two perspectives, um, you can look at it from the existing use, which is the medical um, office, the Life South Community Blood Center, and what is proposed. Um, so for that fifteen thousand seven hundred square foot um, office building, um we looked um, a lot, you know, when we think about traffic in Dunwoody, we really think about rush hour, and so specifically um, at that peak rush hour traffic, um, the traffic generated by the existing use and the proposed use are very similar, so it's not causing um, uh, a higher burden when we're looking at the numbers. Um, when these are taken from the trip generation manual, that's how, um, you know, we calculated it. It's based on the square footage of the existing medical office, and then it's based on the unit count of the senior housing facility. And those traffic counts um, are, are similar, um, based on the trip generation manual um, that we used. Um, so the Planning Commission um, recommended approval of this request at their July eighth meeting in a four to one vote. Um, you can see how those votes split um, there. Um, there were thirteen public comments, there was one comment in support and twelve in opposition. Um, another note is um, uh, this report was published with additional um, public comment, and that was all the public comment um, that was received via email from the time that the application was um, you know, advertised up until the um, uh, August agenda for this meeting was posted. Since that meeting has been posted, uh, we received additional public comment. Um, and um, you know, whenever someone takes the time out of their day to provide comment to staff. Um, we like to make sure that it gets to you, so earlier today I did compile all of the additional public comments that we received, and I sent them to you via email. Um, so I just wanted to note that as well. Um, I forgot to mention this in the last case, but I also did that for um, the previous rezoning at forty-five seventy. Um, so overall staff's recommendation is for approval, um, we recommend approval to these five conditions you see there on the screen. Um, and it's um, basically tying this plan to their, uh, this property to the overall development plan. Um, which sort of lays out um, all of the development regulations for the project. Um, if you have any questions, I'm available. Um, and the applicant also has a presentation prepared for you as well, so I will turn over the microphone to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Sean Reinhardt. Um, I'm joined by Julie Sellers of Dillard Sellers, who I'll invite up in a moment. Um, I'm a Vice President and Development Manager with Dominion, uh, and tonight you know, we are talking about a zoning approval and a development, but we're also talking about people. Um, there are a lot of people who've spent decades raising families, working in working in our communities, volunteering in our neighborhoods, and who now face the difficult reality that they might not have housing options for them. And that a place that they've called home, Dunwoody, is slowly slipping out of reach. Affordable independent rental options for Dunwoody seniors simply do not exist today. So tonight, I'll talk a little bit about who Dominion is. I'll share a little bit about our proposal, and most importantly, I'll talk about why this proposal matters for Dunwoody's future. Dominion spent over fifty years developing, owning, and managing affordable independent senior communities and workforce housing. We're currently providing homes for over seventy thousand residents in twenty-two states. And these are not just structures or developments, but they are homes and communities where people feel safe, valued, and connected. In Georgia alone, we operate twenty-eight communities totaling over fif- five thousand eight hundred homes. And we've been able to grow and size because we are unique. We are a long-term owner and operator. We do not simply build and walk away, but we stay. We operate our properties oftentimes for over thirty years. We hold ourselves to a high standard of quality, design, and care. What we're proposing here in Dunwoody is exactly what we're known for nationwide. Senior housing that is affordable without compromise. It is beautiful, it's thoughtfully designed, it's highly amenitized, it's energy efficient, and it's built to serve residents for decades. I wanna talk a little bit about what this housing is and what this housing is not. And I wanna be clear about folks that will be able to live here. Every resident that will be living here will be fifty-five years or older. There will be no children, and there will be no impact on schools. Instead, I like to imagine longtime neighbors, retired teachers, veterans, small business owners, caregivers, people who've poured into this community for decades. Those are the folks that'll live here. This housing is for seniors who've worked their entire lives, who live on social security or fixed incomes and simply want to remain close to friends, family, and the faith communities that are their lifeline. Under our Affordable Housing Program, which is administered by the State Department of Community Affairs, a senior with up to one point five million in assets who's on a fixed income could still qualify. So let me be clear, this is not for everybody in Dunwoody, and there are going to be people who do not qualify. But there certainly are a lot of people who do. This development is all about affordability, and it's about dignity. You know, the residents that ultimately live in our proposal, those are folks that will be saving ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year on a rental option, because there currently are no affordable rental options for seniors of this community. And I heard some folks talk about other rental options and them being extremely comparable at twelve hundred to seventeen hundred dollars a month. But I want folks to, 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 to know that those numbers also include all utilities. And those all, and, and when folks are comparing them, they may be comparing them to other rental options that are, you know, built in the nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties, older, older product. But when we look at any senior new development product, we're talking about two thousand, three thousand dollars a month in rent or more. The folks that are living here are folks that participate in social gatherings, wellness programs, volunteer efforts in our communities and outside of them. Our residents plant gardens, their mentors, they serve in churches and volunteer at food pantries. And they organize neighborhood watch groups because they care and they are contributors to our community. This housing that we're proposing is what can keep them here in Dunwoody. There are a few things that this housing's not. This is not assisted living, this is not public housing, and this is not transitional housing. This is not housing that is for uh, memory care or continue, continuum of care. These are independent active adults who s- who deserve a home that matches the pride that they have in their community. Over the next few slides, I'll just show a few pictures of existing communities that we've developed in Georgia, Georgia that are all affordable and that are all senior. And I think the word affordable sometimes makes people think bare bones or second-rate, but our communities are the opposite. They look and feel like luxury housing with inviting common spaces, amenities geared towards seniors, and architectural quality that blends seamlessly into the neighborhood. Again, we're not building to sell, we're building to be a partner in the community, and we're building to stay. And because for us, it's really personal. We believe that seniors deserve a home that's just as well-kept and looks just as nice twenty years from now as it does the day that it's opened. And what we'd be building here in Dunwoody is an option that's currently unavailable. And the next couple of slides, uh, Julie, I'll invite Julie up and she'll discuss some of the land use and details of our proposal. Um, but as you listen, I will ask you to remember that this isn't just a development proposal. This is a promise to longtime Dunwoody residents who wanna age in place without the upkeep of a single-family home. This is a pros- promise to independent seniors for searching, who are searching for a community that's designed with their needs in mind. And it's a promise to seniors who are moving from some miles away to be closer to their adult children and grandchildren that they will have this housing option that they've been searching for. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I'll, I'll invite Julie up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers, seventeen seventy-six Peachtree. Um, we are here tonight for a land use decision, well, not the decision tonight, but the public hearing for that decision. Um, and the approval of this request to change the zoning of the property from O and I to P D does not take away from the seventy-three percent of Dunwoody that is currently zoned for single-family detached homes. Your approval of this does not diminish, it doesn't take away the right for people to live in their single-family homes, and it certainly doesn't prohibit people from building more of them. Instead, this request pivots the land use. Instead, this request pivots the land use from the office and institution to the age-restricted use with no impact on schools and less impact on traffic than another development that could be here today by right, very similar traffic to the Life South use for the medical office currently. This property has significant challenges. For those of you that have been there, the topography is extreme. It is a very challenging redevelopment site for most uses. Now, for Dominion, this has actually been a benefit because we are able to utilize the topography to create structured parking. One of the things that we hear complaints about apartments, about, you know, multifamily or the garden-style walk-up, lots of surface parking. That is not what is being proposed here. What is being proposed is high-quality residential living for seniors in your community. Approval of this development will also bring to life phase three of the Ashford-Dunwoody path. That has been identified as a city priority. And as you can see, and as Madeline mentioned, this site plan has undergone a significant amount of work. And one of the things that was paramount was really figuring out how can we incorporate the path in a way that is meaningful, that makes sense, and also allows the development to really engage with that streetscaping. Those transmission lines are a pain. They're going to be a barrier for a lot, but we really did have a creative solution. And what you see before you is a pedestrian path, the multi-use path, so you can bike, you can walk in a safe and aesthetically pleasing manner along this stretch of Ashford-Dunwoody. One of the other benefits of approval, I think, kind of touches on something that the mayor mentioned. At times, you have a zoning decision, and you may approve something which leaves some uncertainty. With the P D district, you've got certainty. We've got our overall development plan that specifies exactly what we can do, and that is all we can do. So if someone wanted to do something different, they don't have a by-right option. They are coming back before you and will have the same similar conversations for whatever changes. But you have a level of certainty with this P D zoning that you don't typically get. That is another benefit. Now, both the direction Dunwoody draft, which has not been adopted yet, and the current comprehensive plan, which is your guiding tool for this application, both recognize the need for a variety of housing types in the city. You all know far better than I do that you are elected to make decisions for the city as a whole. More than fifty thousand residents are looking to you for the decision-making. Now, many of those residents own their homes. You've been hearing from a group of some of the residents who do own their homes. There are other Dunwoody residents who live here, who work here, who pay taxes here, and they rent instead of owning a home. And the reality is there are people who oppose this development, and there are people who support this development. And both are residents in Dunwoody. So let's talk about the why. The why of this application is quite simple. It is to create needed senior housing to serve current Dunwoody residents in a manner that is compatible with the adjacent properties. Creating the senior housing, this is something that has really struck me as I have listened to the opposition over the last few months. And I will fully acknowledge there is a lot we do not agree on. But we actually agree on something. We agree senior housing is needed in the city. Every opponent, I shouldn't make that broad of a generalization. Most opponents have acknowledged that senior housing is needed in the city. Several opponents have said they want this site to be senior housing. They just want it to be different. But the reality is that senior housing is needed. The city has adopted plans that acknowledge that need, and I do think that that is something that has been recognized by most, if not all, of the opponents. While there is that agreement, there is some opposition to who would be served by this particular development proposal. So let's talk about who would be served. I've heard it said that no one in Dunwoody would qualify to live in this community. That is simply false. The most recent data available establishes that there are at least seven hundred and eight residents currently in Dunwoody that are fifty-five and older that would financially qualify to live in this community. We're not building seven hundred units. We're not even building five hundred units. We're proposing two hundred and fifteen units. If this community is developed, only thirty percent of your current residents who would qualify financially and at an age would be able to live here. We're not even meeting the full need that exists. So there are residents that would be served by this community. Let's talk about where those residents might like to live. Our property that we're talking about is in red on the screen in front of you. That's the Life South building. So you see across the street in the turquoise color is the Dunwoody Baptist Campus. We have the yellow to the north of us, which is the self-storage. In gray is the assisted living. In green is the existing apartments. And we're here tonight in that lovely purple box, which represents City Hall. There is not a single, single-family detached home adjacent to this property. Approving this application does not take away from the majority of the city that is zoned for single-family detached homes. Instead, this rezoning would complement the land use balance in the city by transitioning from an oversupply of parcel zone for office use to a much-needed age-restricted housing option in an area that is surrounded by a mixture of uses that are not single-family homes. You all are familiar with the area. You know the character of the area. This is not adjacent. I'm not suggesting that we are placing this on Mount Vernon or on Winter Hall. I mean, there are so many areas in the city that this could be a very different conversation. But as far as compatibility goes, this is Ashford. This is Ashford-Dunwoody, and it is a major commercial corridor in the city. I did want to point out that the current O N I zoning allows buildings to be seventy feet in height. And our buildings, as proposed along Ashford-Dunwoody Road, range from fifty-five feet to sixty-five feet. And again, that's because of the topography of the property. But the property, excuse me, the building design is certainly compatible with the surrounding, excuse me, with the surrounding area. So tonight, we ask you to represent Dunwoody as a whole, more than the fifty thousand people, and approve this request as recommended by your trained professional planning staff and your appointed planning commission. As an applicant, our task is to satisfy the city's criteria as stated in the zoning code. And we have fulfilled that obligation. You have heard from supporters, and you have heard from some opponents. And we ask that you approve this zoning with the conditions recommended by staff to serve a need that exists in Dunwoody. We appreciate your time and your consideration, and we did want to also acknowledge and express appreciation for the residents who have been willing to express their opinion in a forum that it may not be viewed as the popular opinion. These were not people that we went out and, quite frankly, we were stunned at the planning commission and really thankful for the thoughtful approach that residents have taken, both in their emails to you as well as their participations in meeting. And we appreciate your consideration, and we are happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. All right, unless there's an objection, I'm going to, we have a pro- public hearing verse before we do questions of staff and applicant. I'm going to open the public hearing. First, there'll be ten minutes per side, public comments from those in favor. If you'll approach, you'll have ten minutes. You by yourself or share it. And then we'll go from there. Thank you. And, oh, just yourself slowly.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor Council members. My name is Dan Galasso. G A L A S S O. I represent the owner, Life South Community Blood Centers. And just wanted to bring out a couple of points that might be worthwhile. Life South has been a long-term corporate resident of Dunwoody and values the experiences and partnerships that we've built within the city. Having been part of Dunwoody for three decades, we did not make the decision to move lightly. You've heard a lot about how this site should be reserved for developed row houses, cottages, townhomes, or other single-family owner-occupied communities. To provide some perspective, our realtor was in discussions with all kinds of developers, approximately forty over the course of about five months, including developers of communities like the ones the opposition is imagining. We didn't just cherry-pick Dominion and not talk to any others. The retail developers had concerns about the single point of access and the unlikely ability to add a single or a second access point along Ashford-Dunwoody Road. Many of those townhome or single-family developers passed on the site because the cost of building on the site with its elevation and topography presented challenges that would have made the project economically infeasible. The idea of aged restricted or even generally owner-occupied condos sounds appealing, but it's not grounded in the reality of how expensive and difficult the site is to develop for the market. If this project doesn't move forward, Life South will still be moving its operations, and this property will go back on the market and potentially be redeveloped into whatever else. To date, no other plan has emerged from a developer to suggest an alternative that's both financially feasible and provides a public benefit. Life South has been grateful for the community partnership experience over the past thirty years and plans to remain in the Dunwoody community just on a smaller scale and at a different location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for? Okay.
I'm the head of Mayor City Council. My name is Brian Granath, G R A N A T H. And for a moment, I just want to give some perspective. I moved to Dunwoody in nineteen seventy-six when it took one stoplight to get from our home at St. Luke's all the way to Perimeter Mall, which was a quarter of its present size. I have watched Dunwoody grow from a population of thirteen thousand to fifty thousand today. Cities evolve. Change is difficult. I graduated from the original Dunwoody Elementary as a member of the last graduating class in nineteen eighty-five. And five years later, because there was no middle school system in Dunwoody at the time in DeKalb County, so we went eighth through twelfth in Dunwoody. I'm a proud member of Dunwoody class of nineteen ninety. I say that again to say cities evolve, times change, and land use changes. Up and down Ashford-Dunwoody is vacant office buildings, vacant banks, soon to be a vacant blood bank center or or blood center. It is time for Dunwoody to continue to evolve. Meaning, our seniors, for example, my father still lives in the house I grew up in that we purchased new in nineteen seventy-six. He has, he wants to stay in Dunwoody. My sister and I both live close by, but where's he gonna go? This is the type of place that people can move to and open up s- single-family residences for new families to come in. And this is the type of use we need up in, somewhere up and down Ashford-Dunwoody with this corner of Main and Main and Dunwoody being Ashford-Dunwoody and Mount Vernon. And this is just the type of transitional use that I think we need, and I encourage all of you on, I think it's September eighth, to vote in favor. Because Dunwoody is evolving. This corridor is evolving. It's no longer the traffic-laden full-office quarter that it used to be. So we need to encourage more use, and the two hundred fifteen units is not extremely dense. There are other things that could go there, other uses that would have a bigger impact on traffic and and would cause more disruption than allowing our seniors to live in dignity here on the corner of Ashford Center Parkway and Ashford-Dunwoody. So again, I I'm proud to speak up and support as part of Dunwoody's transition as we grow to fifty-five, sixty, seventy thousand people over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Zach. How much time is left, Sharon? Okay, five minutes, thirty seconds. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Council. My name is Zach Humphries. I wanted to give a little bit of maybe of a history lesson of of Dunwoody. So I'm a local historian here. I'm sure a lot of people here in opposition are are likely members of the Homeowners Association. And I kind of want to give a little bit of a context to why the Homeowners Association tends to oppose developments like this. So the Dunwoody Homeowners Association was created in nineteen sixty-nine, technically nineteen seventy by Rodney G. Wells, who was the brother of the whites-only Dunwoody Elementary School. Well, the principal of the whites-only Dunwoody Elementary School. And at that time, Dunwoody highly, there there were not, there was not a single non-white man who owned property here in Dunwoody. It was mainly owned by the Spurles, but because he was losing a lot of money by no longer being able to exploit labor from sharecropping, he sold, and this was also before the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. He solely sold land to white Christian men. So with, after the Fair Housing Act passed in in nineteen sixty-eight, he, property owners could no longer discriminate based on all these legal categories. And so with that, and this, and also World War Two, which allowed veterans to access VA loans, what what ended up happening was this mix of 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 all these things that would have that where Jim Coward, he was a developer, and he proposed more affordable housing to be built next to the old Dunwoody Elementary School. It was condos, not apartments, condos. And the Dunwoody Homeowners Association was created because that affordable housing was below the threshold of the VA loans that would have allowed black people to live here. And particularly black men, you know. And so that was, that was the original creation of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, was to discriminate against certain vulnerable groups of people, and that legacy still continues today. And and we see it with this proposal right now. I mean, vulnerable people deserve, if they live here and they grow up here, and they serve their time here, and they are members of the community here, then they deserve to live here. They deserve to live in the community that they love and support. And it is so frustrating because I, you know, there there's a, the story of Dunwoody. I'm glad it's called a story because it ain't the history. In the story of Dunwoody, the book, it, one of the chapters that talks about the founding of the Homeowners Association was to support housing for any mem- for any Dunwoody resident. And we all know that's false. Because if that were true, then the people who were part of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association would be lining up in support of this proposal, which they're not. Why? Well, because they want to maintain political power here. They do not want, they do not want elderly people who are on lower fixed income to potentially move, move in here. Although this is mainly a proposal for those who are members of Dunwoody. They don't want them to move in here because it would dilute their political power. And that is the continued resolution of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association and the people who are going to be lining up in opposition today. You know, they don't want this proposal because they don't really like having poor people here.
Yep, yep, yep. And y'all say the same thing over and over again about traffic and this and that, you know. When, when, it was in the opposition to the four-lane road over here. It was all about environmentalism and and roads and all that, and and traffic and all that. But but y'all were fine with completely destroying an entire forest of where the, of where the hidden branches lay today for a single-family housing. You know, y'all were perfectly fine with that. So we need, we
we need, we need affordable housing here in Dunwoody, and we especially need it for our vulner- our vulnerable elderly people here. And um, yeah, you know, it it, the history time and time again has shown that those who are in support of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association will continue
Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
Time and time again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Now we'll have um, ten minutes of those in opposition. Um, if I add extra time, I'll let you know. I'm sorry. We have ten minutes. That's how it works. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ten minutes. Right, it is the right, I don't have to apologize. Um, ten minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Wittenstein. I do want to say that I support the idea of having senior housing in Dunwoody, and I support the idea of having uh, uh, income-restricted housing. I'll also point out that the next item on your agenda is age-restricted housing and that I spoke in favor of it at the planning commission meeting. And the Dunwoody Homeowners Association voted unanimously in favor of the age-restricted housing that you're going to view next. So this is not about whether or not there ought to be age-restricted housing in Dunwoody. When the applicant first came forward with their proposal, they asked for a zoning change from O and I to PC three. This area is in PC three. The problem is that PC three wouldn't allow anything like this to be built. The specifics for PC three are a smaller-scale, less-intensive commercial district permitting both shopfront and office buildings. This is so far not that. And in fact, staff uh, in an internal meeting uh, outlined eleven reasons why this couldn't comply with PC three. So the applicant, after having sent out notices to neighbors and after having a public hearing, changed their request from O and I to PC three to O and I and planned development. Now let me say that before you're worried about uh, splitting the baby, this is a complete and total substitution. What they are asking for now is in no way resemble what they started with, and staff made their first big mistake by not requiring the applicant to start from scratch. And to advertise what they were eventually going to request and go through our processes completely. So at a bare minimum, this needs to start back at square one. But let's talk about this. What they want to do is to build a seven-story apartment building in a transitional area. This will be the tallest apartment building in Dunwoody. They want sixty-two units an acre. This will be three times more dense than any apartment complex in Dunwoody. Stacy, you helped establish uh, thirty-five feet as the maximum height for a house in Dunwoody from the ground to the tip of the roof. This is a ninety-five-foot-high building. It's three of those, and you can have a very impressive house at thirty-five feet. This is three of those stacked on top of each other. The only way that you could build something like this here would be to use a planned development. Because a planned development ignores the comp plan, it ignores chapter twenty-seven, it trumps chapter sixteen. All they need to do is to ignore everything in our zoning code as long as you say yes. And let's talk about that. In the history of Dunwoody, you have approved exactly two planned developments. One was State Farm. The other was the John Whelan development over by uh, Georgetown, which used to be the Pipe Farm. Those complied with Dunwoody code. Dunwoody code is very clear. A planned development is for multiple parcels for multiple uses. Those are both great. The thing you're about to hear after this is also a planned development. It is multiple parcels for multiple uses. Very appropriate. This is not. This is one parcel, small at that, one use. Your code does not support allowing this to be a planned development. The second big mistake that staff made was endorsing this absolutely ridiculous bizarre abuse of the planning uh, zoning classification. There is absolutely no excuse for them setting you up in this position to do something which your own code doesn't support. Let's be clear. If you allow a single uh, applicant to take a single lot and use it as a single use, every single applicant who wants to do something that is not supported by our code will come to you and ask you, oh, we just want a planned development. You are setting a precedent that that will eventually lead you into uh, uh, arbitrary and capricious decisions where you allowed one applicant to do a planned development outside of code and not allowing others. The third issue that I think where plant, where where staff messed up was they didn't adequately outline for you what they were asking you to do. This is something we've never done. It's something you shouldn't do, and it's something that if you do now, you'll regret down the road. And I I would guess that, you know, uh, your legal counsel should take a look at whether or not your code prohibits you from doing this as a planned development. But let me, let me finish by saying there are areas of the perimeter where this kind of uh, uh, development is envisioned, and that is in PC two. If these folks really want to come to Dunwoody and really want to serve Dunwoody, PC two includes uh, Walmart and all those acres and acres of surface street parking. There are plenty of paces in Dunwoody where the zoning code would allow a development like this. This site in PC three is not that. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Hey Sharon, how much time do we have left? Okay, three minutes, thirty-seven seconds.
Uh, Dan Weber, Robert did a great job of summarizing a lot of things. Uh, I saw my role in this as a construction attorney who dealt with complex construction projects throughout my career. To take a deep dive into the zoning ordinance and the documentation, we did three open records requests. We discovered what Robert just said about the original application. Here's the list of eleven major violations requesting major exceptions in the original application. We got through open records. Let's try to boil this down to a couple of points. The key objection here is this project is too big in scale. It's too big in density for this area. You made a representation in the current comp plan that it would be smaller for PC three, it would be smaller-scale, less-intensive commercial district. Specifically in the zoning ordinance, that means no more than five stories and sixty-two units. Sixty-two units per acre is unprecedented in this area. Dominion knew that. They knew that. They also know or should know that the code expressly says topography, there's a warning about topography to developers. It may limit your development potential. Okay, they knew that. We need certainty. So they knew that and they proposed putting two hundred and fifteen units on three-point-four-two acres. It's too much. If they want to do that, they can go a half-mile down the road and do it in a district that contemplates this kind of development. I've given you this book, which has a memorandum in it, two-page summary, six pages of detailed analysis citing the zoning ordinance provisions and referencing the twelve exhibits documents that are key documents here. It would be an abuse to use the planned development zoning to escape representations that were made to the community about the limits that would be put on PC three. The basic idea is you move from the mall to this area, it steps down in intensity. Don't violate that. If you approve this project, it will render meaningless your new comp plan for the Ashford area, which says appropriate intensity of two to four stories and lower density. It shows that graphically. Don't do that before you've even had this approved. Planned development, as Robert said, is intended for multiple uses, mar- multiple post-parcels to be unified and integrated into developments. That's what State Farm was. That's what John Whelan with the three city parks over there was. That's what justified that two times in the city history. You'll be setting a horrible precedent if you use that here. You know, the community has an expectation about what's appropriate here, and I would ask you to honor that. Both in the
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that, um, we have to if we, there's a process, and if we give you one more minute, we have to give the other side one more minute, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Um, uh, unless there's an objection, I close this public hearing. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is closed. Discussion, questions, uh, Rob Price.
I don't, I don't really have a question, I guess. I'm just gonna share, I guess, a concern and an observation. Uh, I think that there could be locations where this project could work in the city, but I don't think this is one of them. Um, it is it's uh, it's markedly out of scale to the adjacent properties, and and I'm just basing this when I look at the SLUP criteria. It asks whether the proposed use is compatible with adjacent properties and land uses, including consideration of whether the size, scale, and massing of proposed buildings are appropriate in relation to the size of the subject property and in relation to the size, scale, and massing of adjacent and nearby lots and buildings. And everything adjacent is three or four stories, and this is six or seven, and this is, I mean, it's twice as big. So that's, that's it. Um, I I think it would just change the character of the area. That's, that's my big concern.
Uh, Councilman Henigan.
When I took a look at this project, I looked at it from various perspectives, namely, it was what do I need to do to approve this or deny this? What is the approval criteria? Whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and the intent of the comprehensive plan. We were just told that they're using the plan from twenty-twenty. I went to twenty-twenty, looked at the plan, looked at the area, we're in the perimeter center area. Well then, well, wait a second, there's four perimeter center areas. Let's look at the differences between them. They go from a high-density to a lower to a mixed-use. Let me just read them just for the record. PC one applies to the central core of perimeter center, including the area directly surrounding the Dunwoody Marta train station. This district allows for the highest intensity of buildings, a high level of employment uses, active ground story uses, and a design that supports pedestrian mobility. That's not this area. Let's see, PC two, made up of uses including shopfront, retail, residential, and offices. That's not what they're talking about here. PC three, a small-scale, less-intensive commercial district permitting both shopfront and office buildings. Hmm, that's interesting that what they're talking about is not what is proposed for that area. PC four, made up primarily of residential uses at a scale that provides a transition between the intensity of perimeter center and the surrounding single-family residential neighborhoods. That might work, maybe. Let's see. So I then look at the map and it's PC three. PC three, again, smaller-scale, less-intensive commercial district permitting both shopfront and office buildings. The word residential is nowhere in there. So I take a look at the map, try to figure that out, and I'm like, wait a second, this is a planned development. What are the requirements for approving a planned development? So then I have to go into the planned development, and it's, it's a little wishy-washy. The developer has to provide a gross floor area, residential unit size, and number of all buildings and structures, including a statement pertaining to the appropriateness of the density and the intensity of the suggested uses relative to the policies and standards contained within the comprehensive plan. It doesn't make any sense. What they are proposing in this planned development doesn't come anywhere close to the PC three area of smaller scale. Um, I looked at things like the uh, if the, if in PC three, if the uh, lot lines are a hundred feet or less to the uh, the nearest uh, lot line. If the development is a hundred feet or less, it can only go three stories. I'm sure that development that I saw is awfully close in that one corner. It might be less than a hundred feet. Uh, if it's above, if it's greater than maximum of a hundred feet, you can only go five stories in PC three. They're blowing that out of the water. When it comes to the uh, maximum impervious, seventy-five percent in PC three. They're proposing eighty-five percent. So I don't understand how this can come anywhere near what was proposed against what we're looking at, the comp plan in twenty-twenty, the work that we did for PC three, the piece of perimeter center planning. It's just, it's just, it doesn't match to me. So as far as I'm concerned, the approval criteria is all, is does it conform with the policy intent of the comprehensive plan? I'm not seeing a match. I look forward to hearing from my other council members and the public in the future regarding this matter. Thank you.
Councilman Lautenbacher.
Madeline, I had some questions regarding height. When we looked at the comp plan for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-forty-five, it's, it states clearly two to four stories, right? Is that, I'm reading that right, for Ashford?
For the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-forty-five, yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's what we're thinking of, and we're practically to the point of approving that plan. I go back to the twenty-twenty plan. It, it was as John was reading for the PC three. Do you have a height? I mean, if if they've gone from PC three, if it's PD, do you have a height that is specified in the ordinance for peace, for P, for PD?
So within the PC three zoning district, um, by right, um, five stories or seventy feet, and then additional height can be requested via a special land use permit.
So they're not applying for PC three, right?
Correct. They're applying for a planned development.
And what is the height there?
So the height is based on um, what they've proposed. Um, so the height, um, the maximum height would be ninety-five feet on the low end of the site where the topography dips. That's the maximum height.
Okay, so what it says is uh, approval, let's see. Maximum height of ninety-five feet, so.
Yeah, they're tied to the um, elevations that are submitted as part of the package, and it's included as an exhibit.
So can I clarify one thing for Councilwoman Lautenbacher? A planned unit development doesn't have the criteria that you're asking about.
Right.
Okay, so, because so there's no plan, I mean, State Farm is part of a planned unit development. So just so you know.
So there is no height requirement under PD?
So the height requirement for the planned development district is established by their overall development plan. And their overall development plan ties them to the elevations that they've shown. So that's the maximum height. So basically, what you see on the elevations is what they are tied to. The maximum height on those elevations is ninety-five feet.
So they're telling you their maximum height. Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, um, I no more questions. That's
Uh, Councilman Lambert, I can't totally see you. So do you have anything?
Um, sure.
Well, you don't have to.
I'll defer right now.
Stacy, no. Okay. Everybody clear? Everybody? Okay. Thank you. Um, we will see this again on September eighth. Thank you. And I have a favor. Under state law, we have to keep the doors open. Uh, so when you leave, if you want to have conversations, if you'll just proceed outside. Thank you, because we have more to do. Thank you. And Sharon, we'll just wait a minute. We'll just give it a second to clear out. If I could ask everyone to keep going out the door if you're not staying for the rest of the meeting. Thank you, I mean, you're welcome to stay, we'd love to have you, but we need to continue on, thank you. One more minute. All right.
Item number five is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel number eighteen, three, forty-seven, zero, one, zero, one, five, and eighteen, three, forty-seven, zero, one, zero, six, five, in considering, consideration of zoning case RZ twenty-five, zero, four, for sixty-four and sixty-six perimeter center east from OI Office Institution, district zoning classification to PD Plan Development District.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a fairly complex project. I would like to introduce it to you, I'll split my presentation up in, in three separate parts. First, I would like to introduce you to the background of the site and its environment. Second, I would like to introduce you to the different parts of the development. And third, I'm going for the staff recommendation and the proposed condition. The applicant also has a presentation that I've loaded in here that has a lot of the graphics of the development, I'm not duplicating those, but they will come after my presentation. This site, sixty-four and sixty-six perimeter center east, is adjacent to Interstate two-eight-five to the south, and perimeter center east to the north. It's immediately adjacent to the west, to Ravinia, you see the three Ravinia building there. And then it is adjacent to another office building to the west. The site is approximately sixteen point four acres, so it's a pretty substantial site. It's improved with two existing office buildings that are vacant at this point. Those were the former State Farm buildings before they moved into the new premises. The sixty-four perimeter center east is a thirteen-story office building. The sixty-six perimeter center east is a, I think, seven-story office building. Then you have from, from east, which is to the left of your screen here, you have a parking deck, a multi-story parking deck, then you have a podium between the two buildings. And then you have further to the, to the west, you have a surface parking lots, and I'll have a survey that shows this just as much of a couple of different images. Parcels are accessed through four existing curb cuts of a perimeter center east that will largely remain in place. And then the square footage of the office development there is six hundred and fifty thousand square feet approximately. So it's a fairly sizable development. And the proposal is adaptive reuse to a variety of residential uses. This is adjacent to Interstate two-eight-five, Interstate two-eight-five will change within the next decade or so. Your I-285 express lane project that you have heard of will be right outside this development. It'll be raised lanes at that location. There is the potential of getting sound walls installed if this is a residential use at the cut of time. But this is sort of the setting for the development. This is a survey here, again, where it's a bit more clear to see from the left side of the screen to the west, adjacent to Ravinia, there's large surface parking fields. Then you have the two office buildings that are here labeled as sixty-six and sixty-four perimeter center east, parking podium between the two buildings, multi-story parking deck on the right-hand side of the screen. And then again, office developments to the, to the west, to the east, and the north. I want to point this out here, and I'll, I'll catch up to it again in the proposed conditions. They are what are technically considered buffered streams on this parcel, on, on three sides. These are not, you know, by any means, I mean, they're not pristine environmental corridors, that, that's not what this is, but they are technically considered waters of the state that are buffered, that have development impacts to the site, the applicant is not proposing to make it worse, the applicant is proposing to make it better. But there may be eventual variances or special administrative permits required. The proposed development itself includes the adaptive reuse of the two office buildings. The sixty-four perimeter center east building, which is the taller of the two, will become condominiums, so it will become wholesale residences. Sixty-six perimeter center east, which is the shorter of the two, will become fifty-five plus rentals, or age-restricted rental apartments. The applicant proposes additional condominium units to wrap the multi-story parking deck to the east, so on the right-hand side of the screen. You can see it in dark gray closer to the street, those are wrapped condominium buildings. And then the applicant is proposing to fill in the surface parking lots adjacent to Ravinia on the western side with townhouse units. The total unit count for this is four hundred and forty-one units, consisting of two hundred and fourteen condominium units, a hundred and twenty-six age-restricted rental units, and one hundred and one townhome units. To act as amenities for, for these units, the applicant is proposing several areas, you can see them here in, in, in dark gray, adjacent to the sixty-six perimeter center building, as two amenity areas that may include pools, that may include sports fields, that may include uses like them. Additional amenity areas will be on top of the parking areas, which includes pickleball fields or community gardens. You can see some of those in a second on this graphic here, on this section through the development, where you have that multi-story parking deck now on the left side of the screen with, with amenities on top, then you have amenities on that parking podium, and you have additional amenities for, for the townhomes provided. You can see in the back of the screen here, like this, this this drawing of, of the detention pond that is intended to become an amenity for the site with walkways around it. So twofold use of this. On, on the one hand, the stormwater feature that will make the stormwater situation better for the site, and, but also an amenity for the residents of this parcel. From a transportation standpoint, the site will be accessed through the four existing curb cuts with slight modifications, but the four existing curb cuts will more or less remain because of grade change on the site, there isn't continuous inter-parcels access that, that will not change because of the, the parking podium that's, that's in place. The applicant proposes, and I have a, a graphic in a second, but I'll, that'll show up, that'll make this clear, is proposing a new street that's on our street master plan for this, for the district. They're proposing a median separated esplanade, which is sort of a, a street, a residential street with trees in the median, to give it sort of a, yeah, sort of a specific atmosphere. We're proposing for this street to remain, remain private until it connects at that point. Our Public Works Department is not opposed to making it a public street, but until it connects, we prefer it to, to remain private. And the applicant is proposing to build out their parts of the trail master plan as well, which includes a twelve-foot multi-use trail along perimeter center east, and includes a twelve-foot multi-use trail along the northern parts of the property, eventually connecting towards the Ravinia property, once that gets redeveloped. And then down here, we have the trip generation numbers proposed. And this is comparing the, the proposed unit mix, the four hundred and forty-one units, the unit mix composing of condominium and age-restricted rental units and, and townhomes compared to the office use of the six hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and it shows a reduction by fifty-one percent in trip generation in the twenty-four-hour time period, and eighty percent in the PMB periods, which is from a congestion standpoint, the most important period. Then just to show the location of these improvements, you have that new street coming down L-shaped from perimeter center east, which eventually, if Ravinia gets, gets redeveloped, would connect over there with making this a zoning condition, a twelve-foot trail towards the northern part of the property where the grade is a bit less steep. Again, same thing, if Ravinia comes forward with a development, that would be, would be connected. And then the twelve-foot trail along perimeter center east connecting further towards Two Bridges Park, and then towards the, the bridge over there. This is the same, so it's a similar proposal, it's the same zoning district, it's the PD Development District, Plan Development District. Again, we do not have zoning, specific zoning requirements for the district, we don't have a specific height. Instead, an overall development governs this proposed development, which is part of your package. The overall development plan restricts the users to attached houses, age-restricted rental, owner-occupied multifamily, so like the condominium, the age-restricted rentals and the townhomes. The owner wishes to maintain the current use of office, and there's a data center in the building as a potential use, and that's, it's not the intended use, but if something falls through, the office buildings can continue to be used as office buildings. The overall development plan includes material requirements where these buildings are to be clad in, in high-quality materials, but they're, of course, the existing glass, glass-clad buildings, so that, that won't change as part of this. And then we carried over the sustainability measures that are in the perimeter center district, and we carried it over into the overall development plan. I want to go through the reasoning approval criteria and spend a bit of time on some, and, and basically skip others. This is a reasoning from OI to PD. The comprehensive plan perceives this as perimeter center, future land use as perimeter center. And there's several aspects of this, of this development that the comprehensive plan calls out. Number one, the integration of senior property housing into the fabric of the community, this is a very central location. It's a good location for, for seniors to live. Number two, the comprehensive plan wants to achieve a greater level of owner-occupied housing. In this development, the majority of units are owner-occupied units and have to remain owner-occupied. And then the third, the comprehensive plan calls out the conversion of surface parking to other land uses. Here, their surface parking is converted into townhomes and into amenity area and a detention pond that is a landscape amenity. The adjacent nearby properties, you have Ravinia over there, you have the, the large three Ravinia building immediately adjacent to the west. Then you have lower, lower office buildings to, to the east. Overall, this, we, we find that this is an appropriate transition, it also is the existing buildings, you know, they're, they're not adding new substantial development here. It is the existing buildings that are in place. The elephant in the room is the office market in, in perimeter center. The owner had initially bought this to operate it as, as office buildings, office buildings are in pretty good shape. They tried to find tenants for this, they weren't able to. They come at this as sort of a, a second alternative. And, and this is sort of from the latest Economic Development Review. And, and for the public, that the perimeter office market currently has a vacancy rate of twenty-six percent. Long-term healthy natural rate is fourteen percent, so there is excess capacity in perimeter center office right now. Again, this is the latest Economic Development Report called Buildings Like This, Zombie Office Space, it's the older buildings, aging buildings, far away from amenities, far away from, from, from the mall, from, from the model station. So Economic Development Staff agrees that office is likely not a viable use at that location. And then I, I will go through the, the remaining ones fairly quickly, but I have them ready, if you all want to pull them up. Yeah, we do not think that there'll be a negative impact from this, rather, like, removing office space may help the existing office space. This is the, the same sort of where the changing office markets is important. And then the last one I want to point out here, the impact on, on, on resources, on, from a trip generation standpoint, this is a reduction compared to an occupied office building. Of course, it's more than an unoccupied office building, but we're not planning, we're not planning for, for unoccupied uses. And from a school impact, condominiums tend to have significantly less impact than, than single-family residences in the same number of single-family residences on the schools, and same is true for age-restricted apartments, so this is relatively, or like a a development with over four hundred units, the impact on, on schools is going to be fairly limited. Standing Commission recommended unanimous approval for this at the June meeting. We had people speak in support of this, mentioning successful reuse on the, on the performing assets, speaking highly of the housing mix, including the amount of wholesale housing, the central location, or the walkable, bikeable location to amenities, and the elimination of surface parking. Staff recommends approval on this. The, I'll, I'll go through some of the conditions that aren't standard with this. Number three here, landscape plan, we're asking for that to be submitted as part of the land disturbance permit and, and to be reviewed. Stream buffer, and I, I promise you that I would get back to this. We can do concurrent variances for items on the zoning ordinance. Stream buffer requirements are in chapter sixteen, which is the land development regulations. We can do concurrent variances with stream buffer impacts. The applicant can speak to this, they want to minimize impacts. Overall, the plan shows a reduction of impervious areas close to the streams. There will be updated stormwater management, which will be an improvement for those, for those resources. But there may be special administrative permits or variances required. This zoning approval will not remove this burden, that'll be a separate process. So that's what this condition number four is, is trying to say here. And then we have infrastructure requirements, so like the, the first street shall be stepped out at the property line, but it shall be, you know, they, they shall, when the future development comes to the west, they shall facilitate the connection of this. There's, there's a small sidewalk going to the property to There's a small sidewalk going to the property to the east. We're asking that that sidewalk remain to provide a convenient way to get between the two parcels of the street. Number seven is the trail connection. Again, the same as with the street should be stopped out now, but eventually should connect over to Rovinia. Number eight is the streetscape along Perimeter Center East. There may be dedication required. That's part of the land, the land disturbance permit process and subject to approval of the Public Works Director. And then the ninth one is that the internal street shall remain private. Again, that's, we don't want to take it on as a liability until it connects to anything. Once it connects to something, there's the possibility for it to become a public street, subject to approval of the Public Works Director. With this, I'll be ending staff presentation and the applicant has submitted me presentation slides as well.
Come up. The applicant can come up. You do?
Just make sure I'm speaking to this. Mayor Deutsch, Commission and Community Members. My name is Peter Hanson, Senior Vice President, Strategic Initiatives for the Property Owner Workspace Property Trust. We're the proud owners of this zombie office building that we have heard a lot from the community, your constituents. We've taken note from the Edge City two-point-O report as well as the Pathways Program to really reimagine this albatross office property into a multi-phase residential redevelopment. We're very excited for your community to, you know, benefit from this redevelopment. The office market is roughly nine million square feet in Dunwoody. This represents almost six and a half percent of that alone. So taking this off the market, no longer as office, I think benefits a lot of property owners in the market. And, you know, we've assembled a really strong team. We're a national owner. We have executed a number of redevelopments of office, including into women's sports, professional sports practice facilities, multifamily. But we really rely on local partners and we've assembled a very strong team. Many folks who you've known and have been before you and on other projects. And we're very excited to take this next step forward with you. And I'll let our esteemed counsel, Jessica Hill, present the plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Jessica Hill. My business address is six hundred Peachtree Street and I represent the applicant and property owner who happen to be the same. Mr. Leonhard did a wonderful job walking through everything, so I'm not going to repeat it. You'll be happy to know. I'll also point out, we don't have anything to do with chicken or drive-throughs. We're not in the Ashford area. This is in the perimeter center area. It's sixteen, almost sixteen and a half acres. And we do have multiple uses, so we are asking for the P D zoning district just to highlight some differences and things you've heard tonight. I've got an aerial up here just to highlight obviously the location of the property. You've got the Bell Perimeter Center Apartments to the northwest. You've got Rovinia, obviously, to the west. There's the Townsend at Perimeter Townhomes to the northeast. So, you know, providing for different types of multi-unit and townhome developments in this particular location is in keeping with what's in the immediate area. And the tallest components of this project are already existing. The buildings are there. The new buildings will be the maximum four-story townhomes and the cladding of the parking deck to make it look a little bit better. Let's see here, just some images I'll flip through, happy to go through them, but just showing the different views that Mr. Leonhard already shared. Again, showing the office building that will remain. The sea of parking that will be replaced with townhomes. And then the color rendered plan that shows the project. The buildings that you see in gold, the two rectangular buildings are the two existing buildings. On plan right, you'll see little boxes around the existing, what's colored in purple, parking deck. And those little gold boxes are the cladding of the parking deck that I mentioned. Those will be residential units that'll be in front and on the side of the parking deck to make it a bit more attractive. And the renderings, we'll share more about that. Again, just going back through the program, we've got two hundred and fourteen owner-occupied multi-units. That's going to be, and I'm going to start from right to left on the plan. That's going to be plan right with those gold boxes and then the sixty-four building. And then continuing on to plan left, we've got the sixty-six building, which is the senior building, one hundred and twenty-six senior rental units. And then pretty obvious on plan left, you can see the one hundred and one townhomes. And the zoning conditions do include a ten percent cap on any sort of rental. And then on the bottom left of the plan, you can see the area where there's existing stream and stormwater facilities. We do expect that the project, we're hoping it will not require any stream buffer variances aside from those that can be done administratively. The intent is to pull some of the existing pervious out. And our planner with P E C or engineer with P E C can tell you more about that if you have questions. Circulation, again, did a great job showing it. The four existing curb cuts are going to remain. One of them's going to move a little bit, but there'll be four ways in and out, just like there are today. And then the P C zoning district, the overlay, calls for this road that you see connecting perimeter center east to Rovinia. That is one of the, that is the road that's supposed to bisect this project. So that's why it's there. And that's why it's proposed to be public in the future when it connects to something. Parking, if you wanted to see where parking is going to be, I think it's pretty obvious since we've got two decks. And then obviously each of the townhomes will have their own garages and there is guest parking provided. We're actually, from a code perspective, because the existing decks are there, we're allowed to have more parking than would otherwise be allowed. So there'll be ample parking for all of the residents. The same views that you've seen, again, happy to go through them, but just some nice bird's eye views. Here's the renderings. This is the cladding of the parking deck that I mentioned. So what you're seeing on plan left are the units that are going to go in front of the parking structure. And you can see the existing office building to the right. Again, same view, just from looking a little bit different on plan left are those proposed clad units and then the existing buildings, existing buildings, they kind of look the same. Here's a view looking, if you're standing at Rovinia, looking into the project. So you have townhomes on either side, and this is that drive that will eventually become public. And just some more views of the townhomes. And all of these are, all of these views are included in the conditions. One thing I should note that I'm not sure has been made clear in the various presentations is that the overall development plan is actually four pages of conditions. So in addition to the site plan, in addition to the elevations, the overall development plan, we went through the P C two zoning district and pulled out all of the things that could apply and put those in our overall development plan. So that's how we came up with those conditions. And with that, I'm gonna leave it open for any questions at the end. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's an objection, seeing none. I will offer the floor to anyone in favor of this project. There'll be ten minutes. You don't have to take the whole ten minutes, Robert. So there'll be ten minutes.
Robert Wittenstein, this is exactly what we ought to be doing, guys. This is great. More of this, please. You know, there is absolutely nothing about this that should worry or concern any of us. This is a great readaptation of existing stuff. The Dunwoody Homeowners Association voted unanimously in favor of it. Mayor Shortle, as he was walking out, said, please tell them I'm in favor of it too. So I just wanted to endorse the fact that this is the appropriate use for a planned development and this is a great thing for Dunwoody. Thank you.
Come up. Introduce yourself, please. Say your name slowly so our clerk can hear you.
My name's Chris Hutchison. I live over in the Georgetown subdivision. The dog and I have been passing through this area for the better part of ten years, walking probably two to three times a week. It's one of the most beautiful areas around to walk through. There is no question about it. But there's a lot of changes that have occurred and the previous speakers have covered this. But we've seen a lot of changes in this time and a lot of that is the abandonment of this whole area. We normally come across the creek and come through the Lincoln Parkway property. We cut across that. We'll come up through fifty-four. And then we back up on the sidewalks and we go, what we've seen, of course, you've all seen this too. We saw these buildings deplete because of the completion of the State Farm Building. Of course, City Hall moved from forty-one here. That took some out of the center. And then we had COVID. And during COVID, that's when you really saw it really start to decline. And I look at the, I believe it's the fifty-six property. Right now, it maybe has one half of the first floor being occupied, okay? That's not sustainable. And certainly the term zombie properties does apply. I hate to see these things get stranded. In this time that we've been walking through here, I keep looking at this building and I say, we're in the middle of a housing shortage. You know, what can be done here? How can this be repurposed? Can it be repurposed? Is there a demand for mid-level building? If so, if this is a successful project, to me, it opens up a number of opportunities for the city, the state, the county, everybody, okay? I mean, you're looking at putting in a good, sustainable tax base, whereas now you're looking at, you're actually losing things, not only on retail, but on the commercial side. You look at what's happened in perimeter center with the loss of Antone's, a couple of steak restaurants. Just any number of these places, just, they're gone and they just don't seem to be coming back. And as you look around, like you say, I do walk through this area. What I do see is what's successful, what's full are all the apartment complexes, the condominiums. Those are full, highly desirable. The other thing that I see here in Dunwoody, and this is something I've been consistently wrong on over the years, is the demand for these townhomes. Being a longtime resident of this area, I would swear to you that the Georgetown Square, that they wouldn't have sold those properties, that this Townsend property here in perimeter center, that one wouldn't have sold. And then the one there at Brook Run. And in each instance, I've been spectacularly wrong because they've been sold out before they've been completed. And so when I look at this and I see those townhomes, I see nothing but good here. My only question is, you know, is this actually going to work in those buildings? I hope that it does, because the option at some point means you have to remove those buildings if you're going to reuse that land. There's a lot of land to be used. And this is a very desirable area to live in. And this all does seem to fit with what I see as the city's plan for growth going forward. So, I mean, I like the idea. I'm in favor and I conclude with this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? How much time is left, Sharon? How much? Oh, wow. Anyone else want to speak for? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak against? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. I've lost my gavel, but that's okay. And now it's time for Council Discussion Questions. Who want, does anybody have questions? John, sorry, he was fast, couldn't see.
Jessica, could you stand up, please? In fact, have your whole team stand up. Anybody involved with this plan? I see people that I don't recognize. Well, if you're online, if you're watching, the entire staff and anybody who's watching, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have served on this council for eighteen years. This is, as you've just heard, the third planned development or, you know, the fourth one now that's been proposed. But you knocked it out of the block. I mean, you have converted or are planning to convert a large, large building into beautiful residential properties. Owner-occupied. I've been harping for owner-occupied in this community for a long, long time. You're giving it to me. You're giving us the townhomes. Numerous, numerous townhomes, good quality and a perfect location. And then on top of that, you're giving us the senior apartments, all with amenities and a location that's just outstanding. I've gone through your complete plan of toward your building. I can't thank you enough. This is what this community needs. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have no concerns. I have no questions. Again, how can there be any questions? There's no shadows I'm worried about on the neighbor's property because you're reusing the building. You're reusing the land that's there. You're working with the neighbors, hoping with Rovinia and others. You're providing amenities to the city. You're providing amenities to the community. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I have to say. Appreciate you.
Go ahead, Stacy. Who are they for?
Actually, well, I don't know who they're for. They're for, I guess, either all or whatever. My first is an observation. I just drove it today and I was disappointed to see the walking connection between the parking lot and Rovinia. There's a no-access sign. No, and so I'm kind of hoping that that, once they're built, that the no-access sign will come down and Rovinia will be happy to have the residents walk to where they're going. I need somebody to explain to me these condos by a parking deck. I just don't understand. Where do you access it? Like, I just, I can look at the pretty picture. I don't, I don't understand.
We're gonna let Chuck Travis, our project.
Put up the image if you don't mind.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you.
One second. Can someone get the image up for us, please, Paul or somebody? It's coming. Okay, thank you.
I'll talk slowly. My name is Chuck Travis. I'm a principal with the Housing Studio in Charlotte. And we certainly have been excited about working on this project for some time now. And I appreciate you asking the question about the garage wrap units. And maybe if we go back to the actual site plan.
Keep talking. I'll get there.
So can you zoom in on that? Is that possible? There you go. So the, what we call liner units actually happen on two sides of the parking structure. So you see the, for the gold-colored boxes that Jessica was telling you about. The way that works is actually you have a front opening and then the back next to the garage would be a common corridor. So I can move into the garage, park on the level that I live. If I live on the fourth floor, I can drive to the fourth floor, actually walk into that corridor with my groceries and walk directly into my unit. So it's a liner unit that basically just covers up two edges of the garage. So you're not looking at a garage. You're looking at beautiful units.
You're accessing your condo, you're accessing the building from the garage.
You are. That's one option.
Okay.
How do we get back to the previous? You've got to make attorneys work.
Sad when I'm it. Oh, there you go.
There you go. So what you're actually looking at in this illustration is that is actually at the lowest level where you see the red car in the image. That's the street-level lobby that you'll be coming into off of the street. So I can come into this location, take stairs or elevators to the upper floors. And I'll have stairs in the building in multiple locations, obviously for fire purposes. Also for convenience purposes, because we want it to be convenient to move up and down through the building. You will have elevator service and it will meet all of your housing and ADA requirements as well. But it's a great way to take something that right now is a garage, that you enter the property, turn it into a residential feel and it really sets the tone that this is where residents live and it gives you that type of vernacular. And we're also doing a really wonderful porridge air for building sixty-four, which is also going to make that great sense of arrival when you come to the building. So when you're coming home, you're not coming to an office building. I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
I have a couple more.
Okay.
Okay. We talked about splitting babies. Babies poop. That's a lot of sewers, a lot of stuff we're putting in the sewer. And DeKalb County Sewer is not the most modern. So how worried are we that we're overloading the sewer pipes?
Well, I'm not sure about the pooping part, but.
How's it going? Hey, I'm Chad Lambeth with P E C, three fifty Research Court. This has already been approved by DeKalb County Watershed for sewer capacity. So one of the rare wins in this world, but DeKalb has approved it. So, yeah, thank you.
That is a rare win. Okay. My next question is, the driveway lengths are for the townhomes. Like, I understand they all have garages, but if the person who owns the house has a lot of stuff and they can't park their car in the garage, is there space to park on a driveway? Is a driveway length long enough for a car?
It's not intended for parking on the driveway. So each garage for every unit is two-car garage. So that's, you know, guaranteed for each unit. And then we also have parallel and head-in parking throughout the townhome community for that reason. So to be able to support any additional parking, obviously, the parking deck near the sixty-four building. So to be able to support any additional parking, obviously the, the parking deck um, near the sixty four building could also be utilized for that.
Okay. Um, and my next question is with the senior apartments. Um. What are you putting in to make them comfortable for seniors?
Um, as far as amenities.
Well, amenities just in the apartment themselves, right? Like, are we doing walk-in showers? Like, what, what are we doing? To make them comfortable for the fifty five plus community that we want to serve?
Uh, typically larger unit plans because fifty five plus typically have larger furniture and, and a lot of it. So the square footage of the units will be larger. Uh, storage as well will be one of those things. But yes, it will have showers. It's, it will have, obviously. Uh, bedrooms if you do want to have a guest, but we're also building guest suites. So if you have a guest that comes and wants to spend the night, you can also have sort of your separate quarters for that. Um, it, it'll be class A. Plus type finishes on the interior, actually not a whole lot different than the other market rate type units that you'll see. Where the difference will be is in the amenities that you'll see in the fifty five plus, because you heard a lot tonight about what fifty five plus people want in buildings. Lot of activities, a lot of structured type um, social events. That's the type of things you'll see the difference between the condominiums and the fifty five plus.
I have one more question. Um, and I just want to make sure that I understand, that I understand the layout correctly. Cause when I drove it and where I think the retaining pond is going to go is actually a parking lot right now. So we're actually taking out that concrete that really doesn't even, it's, it's, sorry guys, but it's in terrible shape. Um, so we're taking that out and making that, that's where the retention pond is and that's where the walking trail is going to be. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And brought up just, brought up to current code and state regulation.
Okay, um. I, and I kind of want to echo what John says. I really liked the vision of this and I'm so happy. That we got a win with DeKalb Watershed and we got a win that we have two office buildings that are. Able to be converted. I mean, I feel like we won the lottery.
Uh, Rob.
All right, um. We've all been singing the praises of this. I'm, I really like the sustainability reuse in the building, um, getting rid of acres of asphalt. I'm going to come back to one of Stacy's questions and I can't believe I'm asking this after talking about sustainability, but. Do you think you have enough guest parking spots for your townhomes? And I can't believe I'm asking about parking right after talking about sustainability, but I looked at the map and I'm like. There's a lot of townhomes and I didn't see a lot of pink shaded um, guest spots.
Yeah, I think the intent is to, I mean. Obviously having the, the existing parking deck is a huge asset here naturally. Um, but also, you know, having program for two car garages is, it seems to be adequate for, for this size unit. Um, but also, yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we've tried to implement as much parallel and on street.
I'm, I'm trusting the design and we intentionally have. For good reason, no parking minimums so that people can let the market decide. I'm also going to follow up a little bit on uh Stacy's comment about. Um. The senior um, aspect of this and just uh, questions you may not actually be able to answer at this point, but. Um, earlier we talked about affordability for senior housing um, in another application. What, it may be too early, what kind of price point, I mean, who's your, who's your ideal or your typical? Senior condo or apartment um, renter?
So we just have the uh, building sixty six age restriction uh, for rent. Um, we are targeting Dunwoody residents that want to downsize and live in an active uh, walkable community. Um, and so, you know, pricing again is, is market rate. Um, I think, you know, think about. Two thousand to thirty-five hundred is probably the range to think about. Um, and you know, it's, it's, I think over amenitized for the price point that, that we're developing to, and I think. Um, it, it really benefits, you know, not only the building itself, but. Really the area around it and having the three components will really drive uh, you know, activity there. So.
And, and another, just feeding off another comment that Stacy made, and again, this is probably one you can't answer very specifically either, but. Um, I think she was getting at kind of aging in place features of the housing, not does it have really nice amenities, but. If somebody's got to grab the wall, is there something to grab the wall as they walk down? As they get older and more frail, will the building allow them to stay there for as long as possible? I'm gonna just trust that you have. A good design, but that I, it's just kind of, when she was talking about that, that's, that's what I thought she was asking and that's kind of what I was thinking as well.
We have, we have an ADA consultant engaged in planning to make everything appropriately handled, so. That, thank you.
Gavin.
Yeah, I don't have any questions really, just a, just a comment and I'll just echo what's been said a lot. Um. Uh, this, this is an exciting project to me for a number of reasons. Um, it's completely consistent with our plan and our vision for what we want in this area and in the city. Um, it's hitting a lot of needs that we don't have, especially in this part of town. Um, and I love the fact that we're able to reuse the buildings and, and not scraping and starting from scratch. I think that's, that's a benefit to everybody. So. Uh, I'm real excited to see this one um. Be completed. So thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is. Uh, the. I'm presuming there'll be an H O A of some type for the townhomes so that you know you can't park, try to squeeze your car. On maybe the driveways, which maybe are non-existent. I can't really tell. And I don't really need to know, but just that's, so, so what happens in local government is, is that people think you can solve everything? And then some, even if it's not in your purview. And so I have to ask that question because they'll come to us to tell us there's no parking. Is there any potential of master on the mains in the townhomes? Have you looked at that?
I guess, I, I think our, our, you know, our, our builder that is showing interest in this, I'm assuming they do have, I don't know that answer.
Okay.
At this time, but.
Um, we can, you can ask our staff, but we did require, we've required that our elevators in past projects. I'm not going to. Suggest that now because you have the apartments and the condos next door. But the master on the main units sold out like that. So it's something, you talk about downsizing, it's an in-between. Um, condo, you know, it's a, you have a little more space in a townhome. Um, the. And then it's sort of in the weeds again. You keep talking about the parking deck. I assume there's going to be some kind of shared ownership or cut, like how's that going to work? If the people in the townhome have a guest that uh.
Again, the, the parking area shown here, you have a dedicated parking below the sixty four.
Right.
Building for the age restricted. Then you have a dedicated parking garage that. Can serve overflow for people coming to the site, but it's really meant for the condominium units.
Okay, but there'll be overflow, okay. Um, do you have a sense of if this is approved, like what's next from a timeline perspective?
So, so we've uh, engaged, you know, physical due diligence consultants, G C's and others. Um, so. Again, we're looking forward to your next meeting and.
September eighth.
A positive result. Um, and again, our goal is to uh, pursue entitlements thereafter um, and release. You know, continue our due, physical due diligence as well as uh, you know, execute on, on permits and, and final plans.
And you got Watershed Management in writing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, just curious. Um, okay, we're very excited. We are very grateful to Southern Company for building. A really, really nice office building with higher than normal ceilings and windows that is making this. Adaptive reuse possible. Um, and we're really, because we're going to have other office buildings in Dunwoody that there's no choice, they're coming down. And so this is very exciting and I can't wait to see it because I think it could be a model, it will be a model for other places. Um, so thank you very much for bringing this to Dunwoody. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We're very excited.
Anybody else? All right, September eighth. Thank you. One, but we're going to have a five minute break. Yes, so nine, we will return at nine twenty-five. All right. I'm going to get the room back to order. All right, Sharon, if you don't mind reading the next one.
Our final public hearing for the evening is an ordinance to allow a drive-through oil change facility. At lot parcel number eighteen three forty-five ten zero two three. In consideration of special land use permit case S L U P twenty-five zero three for forty-five fifteen, Shambly Dunwoody Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight.
Evening, everyone.
I'm sorry. My ears are getting tired. Could you make sure you're talking to the microphone?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here to present S L U P twenty-five dash O three. Um, a special land use permit to allow the construction of the drive-through oil change facility. The applicant is also requesting two concurrent variances. They're both setback variances. The first one is to allow the facility to encroach into the twenty-foot north side building setback by nineteen feet. And the second one is to allow the stacking lanes to encroach into the twenty-five-foot north side stacking lane setback by twenty-one feet. And so those are all being rolled into the same request before you all this evening. So the property is approximately half an acre. Um, it has one building. It's currently vacant. It was previously used as a hair salon and an insurance agency. It's zone C one, local commercial, um, and it's mostly surrounded by commercial businesses. So there's shopping centers to the west and south. Um, Truist Bank to the north, and then the terraces of Dunwoody condominiums are located to the east. So Talkway Automotive Group proposes to replace the abandoned building with a drive-through take five quick oil change facility. And so the drive-through oil change facility is proposed on a property that's zone C one and would be classified as a minor vehicle repair shop. In the city of Dunwoody zoning ordinance. Um, such a use is allowed within the C one zoning district by right. Um, but they're proposing a drive-through and all drive-throughs in the city require special land use permits, which is why it's for you all this evening. Um, so the proposed one-story, one thousand three hundred and thirty square foot oil change facility would operate. Two drive-through lanes with four stacking spaces each for a total of eight stacking spaces located to the rear of the building. And the project would also include six parking spaces to the rear of the building. All of that meets city of Dunwoody code. Um, the project would include a pedestrian walkway from the parking spaces at the rear of the property. To the curb cut on Shambly Dunwoody Road. Um, the pedestrian circulation system requirement regulations dictate that the pedestrian walkway. Um, would need to be raised above the vehicle travel surface and equipped with accessible curb ramps. As part of the redevelopment, the applicant is proposing two approximately seven hundred square foot pocket parks. With covered outdoor seating and bike racks next to the entrance on Shambly Dunwoody Road. Due to the location, the limited size of the two pocket parks and the lack of adjacent supportive land uses, staff does not think that these pocket parks would be successful public spaces. Uh, the project will be set back approximately fifty feet from the property edge. Staff requested that the front setback be reduced. The applicant declined to do so. Um, and the main vehicular access to the site is via the entrance on Shambly Dunwoody Road. Um, but the applicant is also proposing to use an existing driveway connection to Dunwoody Park at the rear of the property. To have a second point of ingress and egress. These are the proposed elevations. The building materials would be primarily brick. So the proposed oil change facility is located along the portion of the Dunwoody Trailway along Shambly Dunwoody Road. Dunwoody's Trail Master Plan prioritizes providing safe and enjoyable multi-use trails to improve pedestrian and cyclist connectivity and safety. Additionally, both the city's current comprehensive plan and the Georgetown Master Plan. have stated goals of improving connectivity and walkability through increased bicycle pedestrian facilities. And the Georgetown Master Plan specifically mentions the need for access management strategies to limit the number of curb cuts and protection potential conflict areas along Shambly Dunwoodie Road. Here's a pretty recent picture of what the new trail looks like. As many people are aware, this represents a significant financial investment on the part of the city to making Georgetown more walkable and accessible. The proposed site is somewhat small, prompting the two concurrent variance requests to allow relief from the building setback requirements and the stacking lane setback requirements. The small width of the site raises serious concerns about the proposed access to the site. Driveways in close proximity are considered unsafe due to the increase in the number of conflict points, especially on busy and high-speed streets. Shambly Dunwoodie Road is a congested road. It's close to its maximum capacity for traffic volume, and every driveway represents a potential conflict point for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. The non-compliant lot width resulting in the variance requests has the potential to worsen the traffic safety situation at the curb cut, and a better lot would be better able, oh, excuse me, a wider lot would be better able to accommodate wider driveway spacing. So for arterial streets with a speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour such as Shambly Dunwoodie, the minimum distance between vehicular access points is two hundred and forty-five feet per the city's land development regulations, and the existing ingress and egress on Shambly Dunwoodie Road does not meet this requirement from either the Truist Bank entrance to the north, which is approximately twenty-six feet away, or the shopping center entrance to the south, which is approximately fifty-eight feet away. Additionally, Shambly Dunwoodie Road is on the city's high injury network and is listed in the city's road safety plan as a priority street. The subject site is not historically significant. Staff isn't aware of any archaeological resources. The proposed building is in line with the scale of other buildings in the nearby shopping centers, and adequate provision appears to have been made for refuse and service areas. So the subject property is Zone C one, which has a minimum lot frontage requirement of a hundred feet. The existing lot frontage width of the property is sixty-five feet. And after the building setbacks are applied, the buildable area is approximately twenty feet wide, so pretty narrow. This restriction is unique to the subject property, and the building setbacks do present a practical difficulty for redevelopment. However, this concurrent variance is included as part of the special land use permit request, and staff finds that overall the proposed drive-through oil change facility is not consistent with the spirit and purpose of the comprehensive plan and could be detrimental to public safety. The property has the existing lot frontage width of sixty-five feet, and after the stacking lane setbacks are applied, the buildable area for stacking lanes is approximately fifteen feet. Stacking spaces must be a minimum of nine feet wide, so this does not allow for two stacking spaces without encroachment into the stacking lane setbacks. Again, this presents a practical difficulty for the applicant. However, the concurrent variance is also included as part of the special land use permit request, and staff finds that there are serious access management and traffic safety concerns. We received seven mentions of public of public comment. One in support citing a desire to see the building redevelop to increase tax revenue, and then six in opposition primarily citing concerns about traffic congestion and safety and highlighting the trail, and those were included in the packet to you. So overall, the purpose of requiring a special land use permit for a drive-through is to ensure the appropriateness of the use for the area and maintain high design standards to mitigate adverse impacts. The proposed oil change facility has the potential for adverse impacts such as increased traffic posing a safety threat to pedestrians and cyclists using the multi-use path and conflicts with the access management requirements and the city's goals of increasing connectivity in the Georgetown area. Staff therefore finds that the parcel, due to its location and limited width, does not adequately accommodate the proposed use. So we are recommending denial on this. Should the city council choose to approve it, we have four conditions shown on the screen here. The first is conditioning them to the site plan that was submitted. The second one is conditioning them to the entrance on Shambly Dunwoodie Road being right in, right out only. The third one is just stating that the proposed pedestrian walkway would be in compliance with the pedestrian circulation regulations. And the fourth is that they would need to remove the existing ground sign, and any new signage would need to conform to our sign code. The Planning Commission heard this case on June tenth. They they had one public comment. It was against the it was against the project citing concerns about potential conflicts with the trail improvements. They had a discussion around curb cuts, site design, hours of operation, and property access, and then they voted unanimously, and there were five of them there, to recommend denial for the project.
All right. Does the applicant have a presentation?
All right. Good evening. Preston Willard, I'm the local franchisee for the Take Five Oil Change, so this would be our our local business. Got a short presentation here that I'll run through, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the business or our group. So Take Five at a Glance, founded in nineteen eighty-four, it's now headquartered in Charlotte. It's part of the Driven Brands Network. There's more than a thousand stores nationwide. And it's owned by Atlanta-based Ror Capital Capital Group, which also owns all these brands, so it's a well-established group with high standards. We're proud to be a part of it. The operation as described, it's we're a stay-in-your-car, quick ten-minute oil change, so that's all we do. When you pull onto the lot, we get you pulled in, a team of of our teammates jump on the vehicle, and we get you in and out in less than ten minutes. We're low-impact, clean, and efficient. There's no underground storage tanks or anything like that, and I can talk about how oil is stored and how it's really the most environmentally friendly system to date. But we pride ourselves on being fast, friendly, and simple. Again, no major inspections, no tires, no brakes, not trying to upsell you on anything. You're literally just getting in and getting out back with your day. We change your oil, not your schedule. A little bit about us, Talksway Automotive Group, so we have fourteen locations, primarily in Georgia, just recently expanded up north in New Jersey. We've got three more under construction and have a lot more on the way, so we're a fast-growing company. The normal Take Five prototype, so more times than not, if you were to pull up to a Take Five oil change, this is what it would look like. That's just just kind of standard prototype. Again, what we've proposed here is an all-brick building, metal roof, two bay due to the size of the lot. We've built this building in Grayson, Georgia, and we're currently building it in Conyers. It is really sharp. I mean, it's a really good-looking building, and one of the best-looking automotive centers, in my opinion. Just a quicker, more detailed, closer-up view of of some of the details there with the brick and all-metal roof. So again, to pull up the site plan here, you can see this is kind of a concept plan. We did have the building up front and can move the building up front if desired or closer to the street. But we moved it back to try to put these pocket parks in. Again, this is not really a feature for our business since customers stay in their car the whole time. This was the intent of this was to be kind of a connection to the trail network and be a feature of the trail network and kind of incorporate our business there. Put as much landscaping as we possibly can, leaving the the trees to the rear that acts as the buffer there. There is an existing easement on the back of the property, and it's it's an existing, you know, pathway there, so the intent there would be to just utilize what's already there. Here's a little bit of how it works in terms of like the oil and and how it's environmentally friendly. So again, nothing below ground, everything above ground, and the the things that I have highlighted in green there, you can see how it it connects the used oil system to the new oil system. Then those larger rectangular sections, those are the trench-style pits. Those are what our technicians. One of them will get in to perform the actual oil change underneath the vehicle, so all that is plumbed together. So say, you know, a catastrophic event happens, earthquake, something like that, and we have a situation where oil is leaking out. It's all plumbed back together, so everything will go into the trenches, and then also everything in the building slopes towards there, so everything is self-contained. And then the company that you that comes to evacuate our used oil could could could, you know, do that in the event something like that were to ever happen. Again, we don't have lifts, so none of that. We have an air compressor so we can fill up your tires, but we don't have any air-powered tools, so it's not noisy. Again, because we don't do many repairs. It's just oil changes. So we're really quiet, friendly, and efficient. Thought it was important to focus also on our company. Obviously, oil change is not the most attractive use, so I understand that, but what we're also you know, doing here is a company of personal development. That's what we are. We've got a we've got a career path that's called Pik-Tet the President, and we've got two, we've got lots of examples throughout our company, two that really stand out. Number one is Ms. Brooke Eberhard. She's a technician. She just celebrated her five-year anniversary with us. She's been promoted to district manager now and just bought her first house. She would have figured that out without Talksway Automotive Group. I can guarantee you that, but it's cool to be a part of that journey. And then Mr. Jordan Monk, too. Similar story. Started out, he's about to celebrate his five-year anniversary with us. Is now also a district manager running a group of stores for us, so we don't just, we don't just preach it, we live it. To speak more to their character and the character of the people that are in our company, this was on Memorial Day. I didn't ask them to do this. They could have taken the day off, spent time with family and friends. They went to all of our stores in Georgia and cooked lunch or dinner for our teammates, not for the customers, for actual teammates. Serving the people that were serving our customers. I was just super proud of them and and wanted to highlight that, and there's small things like that that make our company great, and you can find a lot of examples of that throughout our company. We also get involved with our community, so here's examples of us and Winder and Grayson and Swanee and Sugar Hill, where we have locations. We like to get involved. We like to meet the families, meet the businesses, and just be a part of the 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 community. It's a lot of fun for us, and we hope we get the opportunity to do that here in Dunwoodie. Not only do we give, get involved, we give back. So this was in Winder on nine eleven twenty twenty-four, just shortly after the the tragedy of Appalachia High School. Our team up there came together and wanted to do something, and they thought, what better to do than than change some oil and change some lives and have fun doing it? So it was their idea. I was completely on board with it, and on nine eleven, we did over a hundred and sixty free oil changes for all of our first responders, teachers, and hospital workers that helped that helped with the tragedy there. So super proud of the team. It was an awesome day, and and proud to be a part of a company that does it. So again, what kind of company are we? We hire locally. We obviously have a rich culture of promoting from within. We offer health insurance, 401K for all of our spouses and families, long-term disability insurance, life insurance, even offer mental health services for all kinds of things, and we're a process of ongoing improvement. We're not perfect, but we certainly strive for it. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about Take Five, Talksway, or or the project in general.
Thank you. Laurel, do you have something to add?
Yes, please. I just have a few points. Laurel David with Galloway Law Group. We sent out six hundred and ten letters for the community meeting that, and only three people showed up, and and they were all in support. I wanted to highlight that because I think it also shows that this proposed use will provide a service for six hundred and ten people, residences at least, that are within a certain area and within a certain distance, and most of those residences are going to have cars that need their oil changed. It's a appropriate use given the proximity to two eighty-five. It's a little over five hundred feet from two eighty-five. It's Zone C one. There's not a lot of property in the city that is Zone C one where this use could go, except for perhaps perimeter, which is, to me, doesn't seem an appropriate place. That seems more for retail, mixed uses, some residential hopefully, and offices. Preston mentioned that we, one of the reasons he pushed the building back was to add the landscaping and the pocket parks. Another reason for having pocket parks was to actually also speak to a lot of the goals that are in the comprehensive plan about adding green space, having bike-oriented features, encouraging walkability. We don't, it doesn't have to be a pocket park with outdoor seating if if, I mean, the idea is that Take Five is going to take on the responsibility of maintaining that. It would be open to the public. It could be just landscaping with bike parking and and bike repair station, which they were also planning on putting out there. As for the driveways, this is an existing driveway. This is the only main entrance to the property. It's the by not having this use, the driveway is not going away. I will point out there is that other access on Dunwoodie Park that was mentioned, so it's not the only access to the property. The the other point to make, I think, is the way that the building has been oriented on the on the property, and the reason why it is pushed up to just one side is that is directly adjacent to the bank parking lot and the bank drive-through entrance to their driveway. So the the purpose of that was to sort of put like with like, as it were. The stacking lanes are, I think it was like a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and thirty-five feet from the rear property line and the residential buildings to the rear. The dumpster is sixty feet away. This property is very long, and because it is, even though it is not to the front of the property, it is to the front portion of the property, so it would not disturb adjacent neighbors. And we'll take any questions. Thank you.
Let's go. All right, unless there's an objection, I'm opening the public hearing. See no objection. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project, please approach the microphone. I see no one. I'm seeing anyone. Anyone who would like to speak against this project? I see no one. All right, unless there's an objection, I'm closing the public hearing. See no objection. The public hearing is closed. Now I will take question, well, I will not take questions. Who has questions? Rob?
I have, I guess, a couple of questions for the applicant and maybe one question for the staff. So we will start with the applicant first. And it's kind of just a general question. Talk me through traffic on this site. What's the flow in and out? What are the hours of operation? How many cars do you imagine will be coming in and out of the property? Just kind of, how will traffic flow work? I know you've got the access on the back. You've got the access on Shambly Dunwoodie?
Yeah, great, great question. So, yeah, plan on on keeping the same same access points there. Cars, if they're entering in from the rear, could just come to the rear and then enter from the the, I guess, site plan right. Then as they would exit, then they can exit out onto Shambly Dunwoodie, or they could circle around the building and go back out of the rear. The, you know, Take Five oil change, it's a pretty like low-intensity use. I mean, our, out of all of our stores, we average thirty-five cars a day, so you know, there's just not that many vehicles that that are going to come, especially compared to other drive-throughs, right, like fast food or coffee user or something like that. I think this is a great site and a great area with, you know, lots of population, so hopefully we'll see more, but you know, the those are the those are the numbers.
What about typical operating hours?
Yeah, so we're open seven days a week. Monday through Friday, we're seven to seven, and then on, or excuse me, Monday through Saturday, seven to seven, Sunday, nine to five.
And then you touched on it a little bit in your presentation, but just in terms of noise, idling cars, you said no air compressors. What kind of shop noise do you typically have?
It it's. It, it's, I mean, it's minimal. I mean, we, we do have an air compressor. We just don't use any air tools. So the air, air compressor there is in an enclosed area. I can show you that here. It's in this part. So everything is, is located inside of the building. This is a big utility closet. So it's a small air compressor and really its only function is to fill up customers' cars, tires with air, because that's part of our service. We make sure your, your tire pressure is at the correct pressure. And then it does use the air to move the oil from where we drain it in those trench-style pits. We have a oil catch can into the above-ground used oil, oil tanks there. So that's the only noise. We don't have speakers. We don't have anything like that.
All right. Thank you. And I do have a question for staff. And I'm just wondering if you could give me just a little bit more detail on the planning commission and their concerns since they voted unanimously against this. What, what did they specifically highlight as their concerns?
Yeah, I think they had concerns about the safety impacts, the potential conflicts with the trail improvements generally. I remember them highlighting how small the, the parcel is and the challenges that that could provide.
Councilman Lotton Bucker.
Allegra, question for you. The concern seemed to be with the existing curb cut, which means if it wasn't an oil change place, it were some other kind of place, then they'd still go in and out. And you have the same concerns if you had about thirty-five cars there a day?
So the concerns about the curb cut sort of are what they are, given that it's existing, as you've just said. But this is specifically an auto-oriented business. And so, you know, I, I think our concerns about a, a business that's not specifically centered around cars would, would, would be less than, than this one. I mean, this is because it's a drive-through.
Well, I guess I'm equating this to a coffee shop that would, even if it didn't have a drive-through, if they had to go in and get their coffee and go out, you're going to get thirty-five cars a day. I would think it's a, the same kind of car count.
I, I don't have the car count numbers for those right in front of me. But specifically, our concern with this is centered around it being a, a car-oriented business.
Do you see a problem with them coming in on Shambly Dunwoody and making the tight turn to go around into the building?
The, sorry, repeat your question?
A car has entered on Shambly Dunwoody and it comes around the side of the building and then it's kind of making a U-turn to get in line. What do you think the hazard of that is?
Yeah, I mean, we're concerned generally just with pedestrians and cyclists in that area with, with, with turns going in and out there. So, yeah, we have some concerns there.
Well, then you're equally concerned about the bank next door.
Yes. But specifically about the cars turning in, we are concerned with that. I think they've done some studies of the turning movement. They could fit a F-150 or something.
Yeah, that's right. Our, our engineers designed the, sorry to that. Our engineers designed it so that the radius can accommodate like an F-150 or a similar style truck. It probably would not accommodate any sort of like box vehicles or fleet vehicles. So we would be limiting ourselves there. But, you know, any, anybody that has a full-size truck could still make the turn without having to back up and do like a three-point turn.
Yeah, thanks. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm back to the, the pedestrian problem. If you've, you've got a business before it and a business after it, you've got all these businesses cutting across your trail. It's not really a, it's not really a connected trail. It's, it's got a lot of, you've got a lot of businesses to cut through.
Right, we, we are concerned about the closeness of the curb cuts in that area and about the pedestrians and the, and the cyclists.
Right, but you're not suggesting we close it and buy that parcel or make it only a rear entry business?
We are potentially, in discussion of public works, they were concerned about the right-in, right-out only and possibly even extending the, the median across there. So you couldn't turn left.
Right, well, that sounds like a good idea. But again, you can't not have these curb cuts. All right. That's all.
Tom, sorry.
I just want to clarify the, the back entrance going out towards Dunwoody Park, because when you look at the, the parcel map, the lot doesn't actually extend all the way to Dunwoody Park. You mentioned something about an easement. Do you have an existing easement with the bank or whoever owns that property to allow vehicular traffic through that area that you do not own?
Correct, yeah. That's correct. So there, there is an existing easement with, with the property owner and the bank to, yeah, that vehicles would be able to go on that rear entrance exit right there.
Okay, I mean, yeah. So it's my, my biggest concern with this project is we're trying to shoehorn it in something that, in my opinion, doesn't fit. The simple fact that you're requesting a variance to get within one foot of the property line, I think is a testament to that. And in squeezing up that close to the property line, I think has potential to impact your neighbor there, the bank. So if, in, in their future use of their property. So, you know, the, the site is challenging, absolutely. That doesn't mean we have to try and squeeze in something that doesn't fit. And in my opinion, this, this is just the wrong use in this area.
John.
All right, so has the bank, have we had any feedback from the bank regarding that lot line?
No, no, no feedback at, at this time.
Okay, so they've had the opportunity. Your, what's your repeat customer basis? I mean, is it new customers all the time or is it the same customers over and over and over again?
So, yeah, that's a great question. We kind of look at it over like a three-year period, just because, you know, you get your oil changed about once every three to six months. Obviously, in those first years, there's a lot more new customers, could be as high as like seventy, eighty percent new customers. But it typically starts to peter out until about a fifty-fifty new to repeat customer. Most of our stores are seeing about sixty percent repeats and forty percent new customers at, once, once they're at a mature level.
I'm hearing a lot of negativity regarding the trail aspect.
Yeah.
There is a back access. Is there any thought, would your business be any way, shape, form at all? Would it be viable without the access to Shambly Dunwoody? Only allowing access to and from the back access only? And somehow rearranging property? I mean, you've already cut your typical building from three down to two. So again, I'm not sure of your viability on all these things that I'm just raising, but it's, if you were to not go out Shambly Dunwoody, would they, would you, do you think your property could, your business could be viable?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, access is, is definitely an important piece for us. We could still work with the right-in, right-out. Even if the median were to get extended, we could, we could, we could live with that. But having a limited access like that would really kill the viability of the business. So unfortunately, couldn't make that work. We, we have a number of two-bay locations too. I mean, we'd rather do three, just economically. It, it's, it costs about the same to do a three-bay as it does a two-bay. But the two-bay doesn't really limit us that much. We have really successful two-bay stores, so.
All right, well, I, I wish you will. I'm not sure if all my answers have been, my questions have been answered on this project. I still need to do a little bit more research, but I wish you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy. Where's this parking for staff?
Yeah, so I don't know if I can zoom. Okay.
Is it there on the bottom?
That's, that's right.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. So they could park, park towards the rear and then come in.
Gotcha, okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks.
See you on the eighth of September. Next is consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? No. Anybody have any questions?
Is it worth spending a couple of sentences to quickly touch on the wheelchair lift?
It has to be fixed. It's an ADA issue.
It just felt like it might be worth having as a public, right? Public note.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second. Any? Yes.
We're talking about the, the minutes from the twenty-eighth meeting. And there were edits, possibly Sharon, those, which, which version are we looking at today? And what are we being, what are we approving? There were last-minute changes or there was changes? I want to make sure that we're talking about the right thing.
All the corrections were made on the ones that are on, published right now, except for the one that was made at, right at five o'clock today. So if, if council so chooses, Ms. Councilmember Henigan was in my office with me. They could approve with that correction.
Let me explain if I may.
Yes.
Somewhere deep down in the minutes, we're lots of changes, lots of back and forth on the minutes under the community, the community center, what's it, civic, civic area. Yeah, we, we made some, we approved it. The civic would stay in the comp plan, but we made an amendment, I made an amendment removing both the institutional as well as the senior to come out to go from green to yellow. And that was approved six to one with Joe voting against it. And it was, the minutes failed to state where it was being moved from. So your minutes may, at the bottom of page nine, it may show, it doesn't show where the movement came from. So we looked at the minutes, I was in Sharon's office. We looked at the, we listened to the, or the transcription and it was from the civic area to remove both the institutional and the age aspect. Did I say that right, Sharon?
You did. So again, it was just at right at five o'clock to say moving it from green to yellow in the civic campuses character area.
And I'll point out that I raised that issue several days ago, but it was confusing to understand the aspect. But it was the civic where it was being moved from. That's all. So I'd like to make a motion to
amend.
amend the minutes to include the changes that were made at five o'clock, listing the civic area changes on that section. I don't, I'm not sure.
I will second that.
I don't have it in front of me, but I'm.
Okay, we have a motion and this amendment. And now we vote on the amendment?
Rob.
What?
Rob, she was looking to see if amended.
Does anyone have any discussion on this amendment?
I'll, I'll also point out that I talked to the planning commission, the planning staff, and they agreed that those were the minutes as they have it and that they have amended the comp plan accordingly.
Any further discussion on this? If not, I call the question. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously. And then now we're on the amended motion for the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next.
Moving to the one business item of resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five for the generals, for the generals SPOS two and general capital projects funds of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, pursuant to Article Five, Section Five of the Charter of the City, beginning January first, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, appropriate, appropriating the amount shown on each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources.
Good evening, May and Council. So this is the mid-year budget amendment. It's the same presentation I went through the last meeting, so I will go through it quickly. Again, the purpose of the mid-year budget amendment is really a tool to ensure that the city's budget remains relevant and responsive to changing conditions throughout the fiscal year. We're coming now with this budget amendment. So during the summer of twenty twenty-four is when we generated the fiscal year twenty-five revenue and expense budgets. Obviously, we did not have a full year now that the books are closed for twenty twenty-four. And we also received the tax digest for twenty twenty-five, but we're able to come with you, come forward with this budget amendment. To summarize, the budget eliminated, the budget amendment will eliminate the use of fund balance, one point two six million dollars within the general fund. The expense budget will remain unchanged. So that's the general fund impacts within the SPOS two and general capital projects fund. We're addressing previous council action items with this budget amendment and there are no bottom-line changes to the fund, any of the overall budget within those funds. To summarize, the revenue adjustments within the general fund, based on actual results and/or the, I should say, property tax digest for twenty twenty-five. So we're increasing property taxes by three hundred and six thousand, the franchise fees for Georgia Power by three hundred and sixty-five thousand, and the business occupation tax by two hundred and fifty thousand. And then the other smaller revenue sources increased by three hundred and forty-one thousand. So that's how we get to the one point two six million dollar adjustment increase in revenue. On the expense side, the only adjustments that we're proposing at this time are to use salary savings within the police department to fund the six-month trial period for FLOC, the thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to purchase the ten Exxon body-worn cameras and the seventy thousand dollars to fund the shared SWAT police vehicle. Again, none of these changes impact the bottom-line expense budget within the police department or within the general fund. Within other funds, we have adjustment, one adjustment within SPOS two to move thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty out of the Georgetown Trail Project into the Iton Cherry Hill Connector Path Project. We have grant funds for that and this will close out that remaining amount needed to fund that whole project. And then within the general capital project fund, we're transferring twenty-seven thousand dollars to complete the hybrid build-out of all the conference rooms. A total of one point five five million will be transferred into the Brookrun Maintenance Building, a million dollars from Georgetown Gateway, eighty-nine thousand dollars for insurance proceeds and four hundred and sixty-one thousand from the Shalford Road Proceeds contingency. And then for the Veterans Memorial renovation, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand will be transferred into the project again from the Shalford, the contingency for the Shalford proceeds. And I believe that is it. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sorry. Any questions, John?
Yeah, thank you, Richard, for the update. It's always nice when it's good news, right?
Sure.
That being said, we're, we're talking millions of dollars. And this is budgeting, this is planning. Are we doing a good job of budgeting when we had, come back and have this type of extra money that we weren't expecting? I mean, is, I'm not judging, I'm just trying to understand. Typical budgeting, we would have gotten the numbers a little closer or were we being conservative or what's our expectations in the future compared to this year?
So there's always some conservatism built into our budget. So we're doing the budget now for twenty twenty-six, for example. So we are forecasting out revenue for twenty twenty-six. Similar to this, we forecast the revenue for twenty twenty-five in June, July of twenty twenty-four. Obviously, it's only give or take six months of actuals. The majority of our revenue, property taxes, insurance premium, the Georgia Power excise tax, franchise fee, I should say, doesn't come in until the last three months of the year. In the case of Georgia Power, we actually got it this past February. So it's really aligning actuals. We, we budget based on historical numbers and try to trend that out. But until we have actuals to know exactly what happened, that's when we come back and adjust it.
All right, well, that's what I was trying to figure out. I mean, the real property, I guess it's based on the assessments, the franchise fees, does that ever go down? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to, it's.
So historically, now that is, historically, no. Georgia Power, we get a check. As the mayor's mentioned before, the mayor will get a check. So that's all we get. In the case of Georgia Power, we don't get backup for how it's calculated or anything like that. And so we take that check, we take it to the bank and we record revenue and then adjust the.
I always appreciate good news. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to make sure that, we're trying to also doing a good job budgeting. I know there was the, the budget hearing today or the audit committee.
Correct.
Did they look at this at all?
They only, one of the members had a question about the amendment, but they didn't, we didn't dive into specifics.
Perfect, that's all I needed to know. I just wanted to make sure if they were looking at this document, that we would honor them by asking what they'd said. But not looking at this, so thank you, different topic.
Sure.
Move to approve. I need a second.
Second.
Move by Stacy, second by Tom, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, that passes unanimously, about to call the question again. All right, Rachel, thank you, Richard.
Okay. Good evening, um, nice and chilling here, so this will set us up nicely for holiday lights conversation. Um, just a little bit of background, as everybody knows, um, we awarded a contract to Chitwood Studios in twenty twenty two. Um, they have been our, our only provider for holiday lights. Um, so at that time, we extended, um, the option of a four year, um, contract with them. And this is for them to provide the design, installation and onsite maintenance of the month long holiday lights display at Brook Run Park. Um, this started as a twenty twenty COVID program. This was a way for the Parks Department to bring the community together in a self guided and safe environment. Um, according to placer data, we now see a little over forty seven thousand, actually almost forty eight thousand visitors to Brook Run Park during the month of December, which is great. Um, it was also awarded the GRPA District Six Outstanding Special Event Award in twenty twenty three, so very proud of this. Um, this year's theme is Cosmic Wonderland. Um, and I'll go through some of the proposal highlights here. Um, so the main entrance, as you arrive off of North Peachtree, um, they'll be greeted with, um, a lighted theme sign similar to what you see down the bottom of your screen. Um, the sign will be in a retro space theme with glowing lights, um, to fully establish the theme as you drive in. Um, visitors will also be welcomed by eight large illuminated planets that will be suspended in the trees above. Um, this will be interwoven with strands of LED lights. Um, and again, the trees and planets together, um, just really set the scene for, for when you enter the park for our space theme. Continuing down the main park drive, um, between what's like the trailway and then the playground stairs. Um, this is our UFO photo opportunity. Um, so they're bringing back the glow in the dark aspects we had last year. Um, so what you see is a glowing flying saucer, um, illuminated twelve foot seesaws, which is the girl you saw in the picture a couple sites before, something similar to that. Um, they'll also have the touch sensitive floor tiles that we had last year. Um, and again, that, that seesaw that a lot of kids have fun with, lots of photo opportunities with this one. Uh, the mega tree kind of the center of, of this whole event will be up at the front field like it always is. Um, this will sit, um, on a six foot tall base, giving the tree a total height of a little over thirty feet. Um, again, we'll have our synchronized music as we do every year, um, to the ten minute animated show. Um, the light of the tree itself will have about forty eight hundred lights. Um, and then in front of it, you see this, what they're calling, um, a lit snow globe. So this is similar to what we had when we had our ski theme a couple of years ago. People loved it, so we're bringing it back with a little spin to, to fit that cosmic theme. Um, again, people can sit there, you can, you can watch Megatree. We had a lot of people sit there, um, last time and drink their hot chocolate. It was, um, this is the place to be. Um, one of our favorites is what we're calling the Santa launch. Um, so this is what we call the deck walk through, which is where the current blue Adirondack chair is right there. Um, at the playground, um, Santa will have his own rocket, um, it's about fifteen foot tall. Um, have two structures flanked on the sides. Um, and what they're going to do is, is add a fog element, so kind of feels like and looks like it's, he's about to, to take off. Um, we think the kids are gonna have, have a lot of fun with this one. Um, this is just an overview of the site plan. Um, again, the, the proposal highlights, um, I talked through, but what we'll see is a lot of, again, photo opportunities. We have our, um, like our astronaut station, it was called the Space Walk Through. Um, the kids can stand up and, and it'll look like they're an astronaut. Um, we'll have our, our wrapped trees throughout the park, the crate myrtles that we do every year. Um, some lights across the Brook Run Stream, um, it is really, really fun. Um, and we're looking at just over a hundred thousand lights again this year, which I know is always, um, a question we look for, but um, this will come out of with contingency, eighty eight thousand dollars. Um, this will just comes out of our parks operating budget each year. So tonight, um, I'm just here to request that we award a contract to Chitwood Studios for the twenty twenty five holiday lights display to include design, installation, onsite maintenance. Um, and of course, provide, um, funding, authorize us to, uh, get moving on the contract and the city manager to execute any necessary documents. Happy to answer any questions?
Question?
I just have one ask with the onsite maintenance. Last year, Christmas Eve, the tree was not lit. So when we say onsite maintenance, like how, I mean, it was Christmas Eve, like how do we make sure that the tree stays lit? Because it's, you know, it's off hours, it's, it's, it's the evening, it's at nine o'clock at night. So what, what can we do?
Sure, so we, um, so for the month of December, um, we use our allotted overtime hours through triscapes. I mean, it's contracted, we do for concerts, picks in the park. We always set some aside for holiday lights. Um, we will be, I will have to talk to them about, about working in the holidays, uh, which would be Christmas Eve and Christmas in this case. Um, we'll see what we can do within that, um, whether it's more over, you know, an extended overtime rate or something. But, um, yes, that was, that was something we struggled with last year, but, yeah, do our best.
So a couple of thoughts about that. One is, is there technology that Chitwood should have? That lets them know that something isn't working? I mean, I don't know, that's a question for them. But also, is this, is this, if we're gonna continue this, do we need to put it out for bid after this year? Because it's already August, but put it out for bid net with that being one of the criteria.
Sure, yeah, and we'll be up, um, for, I need to double check with purchasing if it's through twenty twenty six and then we will, we'll put it out. But we'll be able to have our multi-year.
I think my concern is, is that the maintenance problems are significant enough that we need a plan. And the plan is probably some cooperation between Chitwood potentially and our team. But, but if there's, I mean, with AI and stuff, if there's technology that someone should have to let you know. I'm sorry, I, I just feel like we're kind of failing sometimes with that. It's a, it's a wonderful thing, it's very disappointing for people to come and have a lot of it not working. So I think we need to figure that out. Obviously, it's August, I think a serious conversation with Chitwood is part of it. Um, and so if there's a lot of rain, I feel like Chitwood should send someone out. Like, I don't know what your expectations are of them, but I feel like there should be contingencies, not just financial, but contingencies in the contract for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, as it stands, so our, our triscapes guys are usually closer. So what we do is we send someone out right at five to make sure everything comes on. Um, if there are issues, they call us, they call Chitwood, we're able to troubleshoot what we can on the phone and things like that. But yes, sometimes like we've had, like a time where go fully submerged in water where it does take a couple of days. But it's, it's definitely a joint partnership, because that is part of their contract for sure.
Uh, go ahead, John.
Looking at the entrance, um, some years I've been really impressed, some years not be, not so much. Um, you have the eight planets. Um, your photo there shows six planets in a row. Looking at the other map, I see four squares on each side. There's LED lights, maybe, I don't know, just the streaming lights. The end, that's the entrance into the whole amenity, and sometimes it's been underwhelming. I've just wondered if those eight planets, four on each side, are gonna be enough of a wow factor as you enter? Or what's the amount of lighting that goes through there? Because again, the past I've seen, ones I enjoyed was the lights that were hanging. Just thousands of lights, streaming lights as you walk in, that whole entrance was lit. Other years, not so much. So I'm, now I'm just trying to understand if I had to make any suggestion would be your planets are great, but make sure that it's, it shows a wow factor at the entrance, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, they could, um, I'll, I'll talk to, to Brandon, our, our contact. What they'll likely do is shift some of the kind of extra LED that just hangs in the trees, maybe in other places at the front, so.
Thank you.
I think the Cosmic Wonderland idea that you came up with was amazing.
Thank you, that's always the hardest part every year is making it different. At some point, we're gonna run out of ideas, I'm afraid.
They're your ideas, they're the lighting companies' ideas.
No, they are.
Very cute, go ahead.
One quick question, just, just because you had mentioned bidding this out, um, maybe next year. What was the cost last year, just for an idea of?
We, we've been at eighty thousand dollars every, we've never had to.
Okay.
To go into contingency.
And it's not, it's not really about, I mean, it's always about money. But it's about whether or not there's a technology out there that would allow, uh, resiliency, that's the word.
Yeah, well, does, how much of the cost and is it gonna work?
Right, right, that's right, I know, okay.
So.
All right, yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Venicki, hope we're still, this is a heavy one, I hope we can. Right. We can also, we don't have to finish it tonight. There, there's not, it's just discussion and we don't have to finish the discussion tonight.
Uh-uh, we just see the menu.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The excitement that I expected at ten twenty at night. Um, what you have before you tonight is a brief discussion on the municipal services that the city provides through private contractors. This is one of the few times in your life you'll get to use the term quen- quenennial and it'll be correct. Every five years since the city's inception, we have rebid these projects. Now, during the course of those five years, we also look at them intermittently. But this year, twenty twenty five, is one of those every five year rebids. First, I'd like to go through a little bit of background on it. When Dunwoody started, like all new municipalities, they were heavily private contracted. Public safety, not, but the other services were. It's how all of our neighboring jurisdictions started up. When you're creating a city from scratch in the modern times, it's the way to go. Every five years, we've looked at rebidding these and sometimes have even amended the contracts in between years as we go along. All of them expire at the end of twenty twenty five, so this is one of those years that we looked at. Now, one thing about this is financial cost is one of the things to determine on this, but also operational costs. And I'd like to thank all the department heads for earlier in the year, sitting down and looking at the departments and the contracts to see what operationally would make sense to pull in-house, what wouldn't, which way we need to go. And that's what was presented to the city council at the retreat earlier this year. Now, one thing about tonight's presentation, and I beg your indulgence on this, is apples to apples comparison this time around is a little bit difficult. So feel free to ask questions, it gets a little confusing in some parts, but I think we've got it down to a good explanation on it. Um, now, one thing also to remember is that when these were last rebid, it was March of twenty twenty. To give everybody things, the doors to City Hall were locked when bids were received. And we literally opened up the door, shook, they didn't even shake their hand, took it away and reviewed them in COVID times. We knew the bids at that time were rather low. Vendors were very, we've got to get a contract in, lock in a price. So the city has actually received really good benefits over the past five years as far as prices. Staff knew that going into this rebidding process, we would end up with a higher than normal contract year over year. And this is no exception on this. Now, the first thing I'd like to talk about is in-house positions that were proposed to be brought in. During the retreat, we came up with ten positions, they're the ones at the top, that staff was proposing to bid in, uh, bring in-house and not rebid. Since that bids came in, there's a recommendation of two more, you see them before you. Four within community development, they're considered, we call them the professional positions on it, city engineer, building officials, a senior planner and a planner. Three positions within finance, and if you look at the very bottom, the two within administration were part of that contract. It was finance and administration. But the three remaining financial positions, risk manager, purchasing manager, and the business license individual will be brought in-house, along with the two administrative positions, the executive assistant, the city manager and the administrative assistant, that's the front desk receptionist. Now, that contract itself, basically, all five positions are being brought in-house. Public Works has only two positions, one is an administrative assistant, which serves both Parks and Public Works and a capitals project manager, that's one that we worked that would be an agreeable position on that. And the technology one, a GIS manager position will be created. Currently, that's one fifth of a manager and two full-time staff. When we get to GIS, I'll explain that in detail. Now, to give one thing that's not on the slide, just to give you the context on this. In the budget that is being developed right now, we already have a price for these and it's, it's budgeted, you'll, salaries will be offered at a later date. But for budgeting purposes, these twelve would be about one point eight million dollars. Now, to try to do an apples to apples comparison, we took all those positions cost in twenty twenty five and indexed it based off the contracts that were totally rebid, which varied between nine and sixteen, seventeen percent. So when you do that, you're looking at bringing these in-house is one point eight million. But keeping them on contract probably would have been around two point one million, so a savings of about three hundred and fifty thousand, bringing these twelve in-house. Now, I'd like to go department by department explaining where they are. And I want to, of course, begin with the most difficult one to explain, so bear with me on this. Community development is an interesting model currently, it's a revenue sharing model. So in other words, building permits come in, the vendor is then given eighty five percent of it, I think it's eighty five percent. And they keep it and they build the staff within that. So it's very hard to say what we're getting, because we adjust the staff as we need to. So the one thing we determined during the review was that the revenue sharing portion doesn't really work in today's world. Part of it is permitting fees go up and down. When you have a large, a large parcel like High Street get developed, they skyrocket. And then it goes down for another eight months, there is no, building permits do this, they don't, they are not steady. It would be better for the city for us to keep the revenue and build the staff accordingly to the needs. So in that case, that's how it was built this time. Instead of having flexible fractional staff, go with four staff in-house and eight staff contracted. Now, two bids were received this time around. And to give some context, currently, we have a vendor who has a subcontractor. Those two individual parties decided to split ways and each bid separately on it. Those were the two bids that were received. And the recommended firm is Nova, which is currently the subcontractor of the existing contract. So in essence, we do keep the same vendor, but we don't keep the same vendor. Um, to give a context over year over year change, so this is looking at what the contract cost this year. And we had to estimate the revenue sharing. There was probably, there is a nine point three percent increase in year over year cost for the community development, uh, department to provide the same services. So in other words, the previous revenue sharing plus the previously contracted individuals now are contracted individuals and city staff and no revenue sharing. So it's an increase of a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars year over year. Now, we as staff were looking at around the sixteen to seventeen percent mark. What we were thinking we would see in these, so this is one of those that's below what we thought. There is still, again, over the past five years, we've gotten, uh, received a very good benefit from this. The second one is finance and administration, and this is a pretty clear cut one. Is that we have five positions and all five in the end will be recommended to be brought in-house. And the estimated year over year increase is so slower in this, because we did find some savings, it's around three percent for finance and administration. Parks is one bid that kept exactly the same, did not change, same staffing and everything. It was a fourteen percent year over year change for this. And this is one of those that we knew that when we came along, we started to look at twenty twenty six, it would be a big jump. It was not as big as we thought, but it was significant. Uh, next up, Public Works, uh, this is one where all the positions were built, uh, uh, bid out, exception of the two that we mentioned. The capital projects managers, the administrative assistant. I do want to explain, this is the one contract that we added a position when we bid it out. One of the things we looked at was a need of the Public Works Department for utility coordination. We do not need a full-time position, and that's one of the things about engineering work is it's easy for us to bid out partial or fractional positions. So it does actually have a one half person position added to it. Uh, with that, the change is about eighteen percent. If you remove that additional position, it drops to about sixteen percent. Now, one thing we're noticing, and this is us talking with, with vendors, like, we did only have one bid for this area. And it was the current incumbent, and so we've stuck with low, we're very happy with them. But this is just to show you that in sometimes, it's not a competitive market. We are, we do have what we are, we are very happy with their service. It's also one of these things, five of these positions out of the ten are fractional, which means we can adjust during the year as we need them. Uh, the last one is technology, uh, the IT department. And this only has to do with GIS services at this point. The other staff has been brought in and things such as security and networking are done through separate contracts. What will happen this next time around is the, instead of a one-fifth time manager and two FTEs equivalent of one O for GIS services, we're proposing to have a full-time manager as a city position to manage and a contract for GIS services. We figured that would be a better thing, to have a more active, daily involved person supervising it. And we actually think the year over year change from this. And we actually think the year-over-year change from this, the hundred and eight thousand, we think, is an estimate based off a similar city that's got the same setup. So we think we should be able to control costs within three or four percent of current existing costs on technology. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? Joe, John, sorry.
Tell me about your staffing in the community development, since there's no revenue sharing. If a High Street comes in, how are the services going to be provided? We're no longer going to outsource those. They're no longer bringing in their technical experts from other cities that have the same contract. Explain to me how we're going to provide the correct services.
What we're doing is we're bringing in some things as full-time things. So the both the building official and the city engineer are full-time staff. They will have a background that are qualified to do that. Every once in a while, you will need to get an expert in some small thing, but right now, the proposed staffing level should be able to do it by themselves.
Okay. Tell me about the fire code, fire marshal aspect. Where is that position? Who's doing that type of job for us?
I'm going to defer to Richard on that one, because that's more his wheelhouse.
That's all right. I get it.
Yeah, it's balls under the building official who can also do that.
So we're bringing that in-house.
Correct. And we're also upping the building inspector from part-time to full-time position.
Okay.
Right now, we have a, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Right now, we have a building official and a part-time building, they all sit outside my door. I never knew what their roles were. But building inspector, but maybe that's why I don't see the building inspector so much. So that's part-time?
Yes.
Okay. And they would both become full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
The building official would be a city employee and the inspector would be a contract employee.
Thank you.
So my takeaway from all this, and thinking back to the retreat when we kind of talked about it, is it's better news than we thought it was going to be.
Yes.
All right, good.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so the whoops, I'm sorry, I'll say that again, my mic was on. The new position for utility coordinator, is that specifically for projects, like when utility poles need to be moved and stuff? And what's in the, do we expect better, better service, quicker responses?
That's in in Michael Smith's in my discussion off of this, and going back and forth, do we want to add during this? This came up as make everything go a little bit faster. If we can gain a little bit, and utility coordination is probably the one thing that if you have bandwidth, you help speed up the project.
And obviously, we're adding new staff and new positions, and that's on the the compensation chart. How was that all determined? Was there any shopping or looking at similar municipalities for the jobs? And how are the, how are the ranges determined?
Nicole Stork is here to elaborate on it, but would you like to do it yourself? Yes, since you stayed here.
You hung out for the whole meeting. I figured I'd get you up here.
Yeah, that's a great question. We did work with our compensation consultant on that. So we benchmarked the same way we do with all of our studies at eighty-five percent of market. And she helped us slot which grade those positions belong in.
Okay. For GIS, I like the idea of a person. Do we monitor like their workload and stuff? I know I'm really, really in the weeds.
The IT, yes, it is actively managed and like, and part of it was in the review the departments did.
Right.
And created this model from it.
Okay. Okay. Will we see this again? Is there a schedule? What's the plan? You can tell us another time.
We, we can put it on the next one, if you want to put it on consent or the next one after that.
Not the next one after that. Just put it on consent, I guess, or new bit, put it on new business or business. Does that work? Or Nicole's going to be out of town. Nicole's not going to be here, do we? I think we're fine.
Are you expecting more questions on this?
I don't know. My brain is done. No, so okay, consent?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a big change. That's why I wasn't saying consent. Business and we'll be, if we can't, if somebody ends up with a question that Nicole needs to answer, we can just defer.
I really just wish this wasn't at ten thirty.
Right, so I think we bring it again.
News stations, hello.
Right.
But.
I think we bring it back as a business item, and then we can always defer it if there's questions for Nicole. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Anything else? I think the meeting's over. Let's see. Public comments? Yeah, no. City manager comments? We already had executive session. Council comments. I also want to remember Detective Lavery and remind people that there is a GoFundMe. If you Google the Nwe Police Foundation, you'll, you'll find it, and to continue to keep his family, friends in the department in our thoughts. And with that, anybody else? I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, move by Stacy, second by Catherine. All in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned. I know.